At this time, I'll call the June Board Meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to order. Before we get started, if you have your cellphone with you, please put it in the silent mode. If it was caught, you'd be locked up, but we're not going to lock anybody up if it goes off, but please, just out of courtesy to speakers, make sure it's either off or in the vibrate mode. At this time, we'll stand and I'm going to ask Commissioner Langley leading the invocation and Commissioner Evans leading the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble ourselves here together one more time. Father, touch our hearts and minds that we will have an open heart and open mind to hear what your people have to say and Father, that we will make informed decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good evening. At this time, we'll recognize any of the commissioners, if they have a conflict of interest on either one or more items that's on our agenda tonight.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Item number D is the Agenda Approval. I'm going to ask that we move the budget decision to item number 27 under Decisions.
What number is it now, Mr. Chairman?
It's following the public hearing. And to give ample time for commissioners to speak, I'm going to move it to item number Any other change in the agenda? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, we're down to item number E, the approval of the consent items. Is there any item that you want to move down to more discussion for a decision? If not, I'll entertain a motion to...
It's removed.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote six, one. Now we're down to the first public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is on the Pantigah Rescue District. So at this time, I entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we wait until the set time for that?
You're right. 5:40. Okay. What would you like to do between that and 5:40?
Actually, you're okay. It was advertised as 5:30 or assumed they're possible after, so as long as it's after 5:30, you're okay.
Oh, okay.
Just because that was the official publication.
If that's the advertisement.
Yes, sir.
All right. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Then may.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. At this time, I'll call on the county manager, Brian Alligood, for his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is a hearing to receive comments from the public regarding including the territory within the corporate limits of the town of Pantigah into the Pantigah Township Rescue Service Tax District. As you're aware, the territory inside the municipal limits of the town of Pantigah is currently served by county EMS services that are funded by tax revenues that are generated by that district. The tax in that district is five cent per $100 evaluation. However, the territory within the corporate limits of the town were not included in the district and are not taxed to support those services. Per General Statute 153A 302, the governing body of a municipality must agree by resolution to allow territory within its corporate limits to be included in a special service tax district. On May 13 of this year, the governing body of the town of Pantigah approved the resolution asking that that territory within its corporate limits be included in the district. Per General Statute 153A 302, required notices regarding this matter have been made. You have a copy of the notice in your agenda item. They were also, it was noticed in the paper as well as first-class mail was sent to every property and owner that we had of record in the corporate limits of Pantigah. So this hearing is to receive comment from the public on that, and the board, after hearing that, needs to decide whether to include that territory in the district, and that territory would be effective July 1 of 17 and will be taxed as such in the 1718 budget. Be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Does any commissioner have a question?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, did we get any feedback from the letters that were sent out?
I've not received any. Any other commissioner have a comment or a question? Is there anyone here that would like to participate in the public hearing? If you do step up to the podium, give your name and address, and you have up to three I think I'm supposed to wait 30 seconds, and I'm not going to say.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, a good thing. Good thing.
Motion to come out.
Okay, got a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, at this time, we're going to have our public hearing on the proposed...
Mr. Chairman, I'd need some action on this item if they choose to take that.
Make a motion to include city limits of Pantigah in the five district budget.
In the EMS service.
EMS service.
Certain. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Booth and a second by Commissioner Evans. Any discussion? If not, those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, we're down to the 2017-2018 Proposed Budget Public Hearing, and at this time, I need a motion to go into that public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. At this time, I'll let our county manager, Brian Alligood, give his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is a public hearing to receive comments regarding the fiscal year 1718 proposed budget. As you're aware, General Statute 15912B requires that before adopting a budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which time persons who may wish to be heard on the budget may appear, so that is what this public hearing is for. You're aware that the Board of Commissioners completed its budget workshops and revised the managers' recommended budget. Attached is a copy of the revised manager's budget message that describes the changes made by the board to the manager's recommended budget. Also attached is a copy of the proposed fiscal year 1718 budget ordinance. Based on the revised budget, the budget is balanced and is prepared in accordance with the policies and procedures outlined in the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. And you're also aware, General Statute 159A 13, 15913A requires that the budget be adopted by July 1. So I'd be glad to hit the highlights if you want me to. That's up to the board.
I think we'll move right into the public hearing. At this time, we'll recognize, if you will, when you step to the podium, give your name and your address, and then you're limited to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, then I will gavel you down and ask that you be seated. And there's no particular order, so if you want to stand in line or just keep coming, that'll be fine. So who wants to go first?
Good evening, Mr. Manager, Commissioners of Ray Larry, Chaco Winery, North Carolina. I'm speaking for the citizens of the better government. Public County Budget 2017-18 does not represent the wishes or aspirations of the hard-working taxpayers of this county. Those living below the poverty level as defined by the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce were 18.4 percent of the population in 2015. This is over 8,500 people. The increase in spending fees and taxes by the county over the last four years has negatively impacted low-income families more than the affluent among us. Solid waste fee increase proposed last year was a fixed fee increase, not a percentage based on property values or income. When the increase EMS fire, water, solid waste fee are added to the property taxes in 2015-16, the tax increase exceeded 16 percent on a property appraised at $85,000. It is an even higher percentage on property value at $50,000. Think about this for a minute. Those that can least afford it are the ones paying a disproportionate higher share. More than 60 employees have been added to the county payroll during the same period with no perceived increase in services or the value of those services. In addition, municipalities have increased some fees and decreased the level of service. Chaco Winery implemented a $60 a year fee for garbage collection and reduced the garbage pickup from two times per week to one. Does this board not take into account what is happening here? The population growth is stagnant and getting older with many on fixed incomes. Young people that grew up here are leaving. Per capita income is estimated to decrease by $2,000 per year in 2019, according to the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce. Borrowing $3 million to cover operating expenses just postpones an inevitable tax increase next year. Refinancing mature debt is a shell game that this board believes few understand and even less care about, but they will by November 2018. How can this board with a clear conscience do this in a Tier One county? Continuation budgeting is really hurting many people in Beaufort County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Lay, spelled L-A-Y, not L-A-Y-E, as some people over at the BATS system seem to think. I live in Washington, and part of my tax dollars taken away from me to prop up the Beaufort area transit system. I highly resent that for several reasons. It was my understanding that it was to be a public transit system and that anybody could ride. That is not true, as I have found out. It is also my opinion that if it can't support itself, it needs to go belly up. If I didn't produce the proper results in my occupation, nobody would support me with the taxpayer dollar, and I wouldn't expect them to, but you expect me to be happy about you, that is, six of you minus Mr. Richardson, supporting the BATS system with my money. That transit system refused to take that bus out for two hours on Saturday, April 22nd, and two hours on Sunday, April 23rd, to take about 30 geologists from all over the country to BATS and to a church site at Mokopongo Creek. The group got a bus from Greenville to do the job, so that money went to Pitt County. Good going, y'all. I hope you get lots of votes from that. The BATS system is funded by the state of North Carolina. Beaufort County is not required to put one dime into it, but for some reason, some of you commissioners decided to give them in excess of $100,000 from the Beaufort County taxpayers' pocket this year. I resent every single copper penny of my money going into that transit system. They refuse to allow my friends to ride for any amount of money. I really don't think the taxpaying citizens knew the system worked like that, and they do now. I am told that what I wanted to do couldn't be done because the DOT in Raleigh tells BATS what they can do. That's what they told me. They agreed to check on it, as my group had no problem with paying whatever was asked of them. Under the right leadership, that money could have been used to reduce the amount of money the taxpayers ripped off for regarding BATS. As a matter of fact, they called after I'd left the house to ask my husband to tell me they couldn't take it out because the DOT in Raleigh will not let them put that bus on the road on the weekend. So much for the public transit system. You can't have a knee on the weekend. Oh, by the way, I have no doubt the legislature in Raleigh has their finger in this pot. There is one thing you're all missing, however. The taxpayers in Beaufort County are busy educating themselves. They will know who to vote for in the next election, as that seems to be a major reason for some of the stupid things a few of you do. My friends and I will be supporting the best man or woman for the job. Thank you.
Go in once, go in twice, anyone else on the budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down to the public comments, and I have a total of seven or eight, let's see, three. I've got a total of seven. Is there anyone else that would like to add your name at this time? If not, we'll close with this seven. All right, the rule is on the public comment is same thing. You get up to three minutes. If you go over the three minutes, then I'll gavel you down and you'll have to take a seat. I'm not, I'm going to let you come up in the order that you signed up, if you know what that is, or anybody can start, so. Thank you very much. Introduce yourself and where you're from.
I was asking, my computer went down, I'm waiting for my written comments. Can I be moved to the back?
Yes, you sure can. You sure can. As long as they're up by the time we get through.
I'm Diane Van Staldeynen, 460 Biggs Road, Washington. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children of Terraceya Christian School, children of Beaufort County. I have been assured by Inverge, by an outside source that I spoke to about solar panels, that I have nothing to fear, that they are completely safe, and yet, as a mother and a grandmother of two students at Terraceya Christian School, I don't have any peace about that. Yesterday, my family drove past the solar facility on White Post Road. I don't know if any of you have been passed there, but I suggest you drive by because huge placards are hung on the fence, not just one, but placard after placard after placard that say "Warning," and then in bigger letters they say "Danger," and underneath that they say "High Voltage." These fences are going to encompass where my daughter and my grandson will play, where my sister-in-laws and my friends and my family teach, and work, and drive buses, and where my children participate in sports and drama and all the things that help grow them especially into the Christian leaders that we want for this county and our country. I respectfully implore you to give us a nine-month moratorium. Give us the time that was taken from us so that you can find proof to settle this mama and grandmama's heart, because those placards are going to be what my child and my grandson read every day. Thank you.
I apologize. My name is Jeanne Van Staldeynen. I live at 7593 Old 97 Road, and I am a teacher at Terraceya Christian School. Having been in existence for 80 years, Terraceya is the oldest K-12 Christian school in the state of North Carolina, and I respectfully ask you to help protect our school. Four generations of my family have been involved in the school, from establishing it, to attending it, to graduating from it. Agriculture and academics have gone hand in hand at Terraceya. Our school is made up of generations of farmers and is supported by those involved in agriculture. Removing rich fertile farmland and replacing it with solar panels, which were placed directly next to our school, will destroy our heritage. The years of hard labor and sacrifice that have been poured into providing an education that is taught from a Christian perspective, academically excellent, and one that develops a godly character in our students, will be a thing of the past. Instead of perpetuating the growth of our school, the placement of these solar panels will halt and kill it. These panels weigh some of Terraceya's most valuable resources, our children and our farmland. Our school's opportunity to serve our community by producing leaders that possess integrity, honesty, and loyalty will be terminated. Once this heritage is destroyed, it cannot be replaced. We are just a microcosm in the state of North Carolina, but our children and our heritage have a right to your protection. We are making sacrifices to keep our school viable. Teachers work for about half the salary they can make in a public school, and parents sacrifice to pay for their children's education. Terraceya Christian School and its graduates have contributed to our county, community, and state, and it will be a great loss to all if we are taken out of existence. We offer an option to the citizens of Beaufort County that is unparalleled. Please do your part to protect us and give us a nine-month moratorium. Thank you.
I apologize for the delay. I'm Jennifer Scavala Alligood. Good evening. I come before you this evening to request an ordinance for a nine-month moratorium regarding the solar facility known as Wilkerson LLC that will be loaded, that is, to be located in the Terraceya community. This moratorium will allow the reprieve for both the Terraceya community and county commissioners regroup and together decide the best course of action for our community, but most importantly for the Terraceya Christian School. North Carolina General Statute regarding the rules and regulations of County Commissioners 153A-121 states, "A county may, by ordinance, define, regulate, prohibit, or abate acts, omissions, or conditions detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of its citizens and the peace and dignity of the county, and may define and abate new nuisances." I am sure you gentlemen are currently finding yourselves embroiled in a situation where you'd like to abate nuisances from all factions involved. Yet, as elected representatives of Beaufort County, I feel it is your moral obligation to come forward and do everything in your power to protect the rural community of Terraceya, an agricultural community formed around a simple and humble school, whose parents and community and members have worked unceasingly for 80 years to procure a solid education which has promoted Christian values for thousands of children. As you realize, we're up against a well-seasoned and well-honed operation. Inverge LLC knows exactly how to play the game. A little internet research will show you results they are wreaking havoc all over our country. During the recent North Carolina Utilities Commission, Mrs. April Montgomery smugly stated that Beaufort County is one of the easiest counties in North Carolina to place large solar facilities due to unabated regulations of laws. Essentially, we have given them free rein to wreak havoc with our lives, communities, and children. It should be noted, as we have in any laws of protection, the people of Beaufort County are no more than chattel to be bought and sold at the whims of large corporations with absolutely no legal recourse. For example, when Inverge blocked and usurped our rights of due process during the North Carolina Utilities hearing in Raleigh by not allowing the school to be legally represented, as well as guarding the county permit that allows 422 lithium-ion batteries and substation to be located next to the children's playground and school, we were told these batteries are safe, yet Mrs. Montgomery said our fire department will be trained in giving proper Quentin case one of these batteries should catch fire. The firefighters will know how to mediate the carbon monoxide and the hundred toxic chemicals that will be emitted from a burning battery. As our community is serviced by a volunteer fire department, and this project goes, and if this project goes through, I am sure the county will allow next year's budget to employ a full-time staff of firefighters for the safety of the children. I respectfully request a nine-month moratorium for the LLC solar facility. I assure you that if you take action, stand behind us. By honoring this request, we as a community will stand behind you. Will you please help us?
My name is Myra Beasley. I'm at 24515 NC Highway 32 North, Plymouth. I am here tonight asking the commission to protect the Terraceya Christian School. I understand that the landowners and the developer both have rights, but the school has been a vital part of Beaufort County for 80 years. The school is depending on the commissioners to protect their land rights, the students, and the faculty. In 2005, I was asked to serve on the five-year Planning Committee and Vision Committee of the school. The committee worked on developing a plan for expansion of the facility based on Terraceya Christian School's ability to tie into the Beaufort County sewer line which was serving Delta City. Terraceya had faced difficulty expanding the current sewer system and was unable to add any additional classroom space to the existing facility based on the current sewer facility. The county commissioners unanimously approved the school to tie into the sewer line from Delta City. With this approval, Terraceya School was able to secure a $210,000 grant in 2006 and raise an additional $49,000 to make the connection a reality. The dollars spent by the state, county, and school will now be futile due to the incompatible land use the solar facility will create around the school for at least 30 years. I'm asking the commission to protect the oldest K-12 Christian school in North Carolina from the threat of a solar facility, substation, and battery unit, which will adjoin the school on two sides. The commission needs to make an accurate evaluation of the proposed solar facility by placing a nine-month moratorium on this project. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Meyer. My address is 5121 Terraceya Road. Up until May 27, I was a senior at Terraceya Christian School, which I have attended since kindergarten. Right now, you have heard from, and you will continue to hear from, people who are concerned about the planned solar project. They have spoken about the detrimental effects of photovoltaic cells in the farmland, safety hazard involved, and citing issues, but I would like to speak as a former student about how the solar installation will affect Terraceya Christian School. Our school, despite its size, is a valuable asset to our community here in eastern North Carolina. It's no secret that we're a small school. We don't have hundreds or thousands of students, nor do we have expansive facilities or extensive funding. funding. But our size, however small, is our greatest strength. At Teresia, my fellow students and I have built personal relationships with our teachers, and in doing so, they have become more than ordinary teachers to us. They are our mentors and our role models. They encourage us when we fail, and they show great pride in us when we succeed. I myself have experienced how valuable my education from Teresia is. Recently, I was admitted into the Honors Program at my top choice university, and I received a full tuition scholarship as well. I credit that success to the education and the support that I was shown while attending Teresia Christian School for all thirteen years. At Teresia, a student is not just taught. A student is nurtured, a student is loved, and their success and their well-being has the highest priority. I also believe that the school is valuable because the student body acts like a family towards each other. I have seen students pull together when a tragedy occurs, and I have seen us champion each other's efforts to succeed and to support us throughout it all. We at Teresia stand to lose all of this if the proposed solar installation is put into place. Many prospective and current families would stop attending or considering attending Teresia Christian School if that occurred. I believe that every family who desires a complete and outstanding education should be able to send their children to Teresia Christian School and not to be constrained by inconvenience, by health hazards, or declining enrollment due to the proposed solar project. And for those reasons, I ask that you will grant a nine-month moratorium on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
My address is 295 Cypress Shores Road in Washington. I'm going to speak two things. First and foremost, I am a parent of three children that will be attending Teresia Christian School this coming year. And I want to talk about, you know, the dangers that we face with the solar farm, solar facility coming in right beside us. Whether it's real or fictitious, there's enough bad publicity out there that it's too much of a danger, and it would be too risky for our school. Trust me, talking a mother into saying, "Oh, these solar farms are going to be fine, there's no problem," trust me, that's a tough sale. So, it's going to hurt our school from that way, from the perception. It's just going to kill enrollment. That's reality. The other side I'm going to speak to is working in agriculture for over twenty years, what this is going to do to, or what this could do to Beaufort County. The company I work for, we service five states, and anywhere we go, anywhere we go, and I say, "I'm from eastern, eastern North Carolina, Beaufort County, the blacklands." I mean, across the five states we cover, they know where that is. They know that that's the richest soil in our part of the country. And it would just be, it's a shame, eh, to put this beside a school and put our kids at risk and then to take our fault, to do away with this valuable resource. It's just, it's a shame. And I'm for the nine-month moratorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill.
I'm Bill Van Staldein. I reside at 460 Biggs Road, Washington, North Carolina. I have seven children that are attended, one still in school there. I'm just going to get right down to the brass thing. I mean, the investment, this is Chicago money. When we were at the Utility Commission in Raleigh, it's all investors. I mean, this, and I hear that the county's not really going to make any big bucks off of this. They get a tax break. So, it's the investors and the Chicago firm that is tearing up farmland, and I know farmers have rights. He can sell his land, rent his land. But you all represent the majority, and I would say the majority are against that solar facility. And that's what I would ask you to do, to listen to the majority, represent the majority, not some outsider of the state, people that have money that are going to turn a quick dollar because the government is subsidizing all this. Think about it. You're not going to gain a lot of income from this project. We're going to lose income, probably have to shut the school down. So, please represent the people that voted you in when making this decision. I'll ask for a nine-month moratorium. If more than that, just shut the thing down, please. Thank you.
I believe that Bill was the last one that I had on the list. Is there, is there anyone else?
Yes, Patricia Garrison, 384 Maple Street, Pantego. We've listened to the emotional pleas of the citizens and the families at Teresia Christian School. Now, let's look at some of the facts. Bill brought up a very good fact. This is not a local organization that's coming into Beaufort County. They come from Chicago. They have no bearing, no thought of what they're going to do to farmland. I talked with a representative from Senator Cook's office some months ago about this. The batteries used in these solar panels are only good for twenty years. At this point in time, there is no way to clean up the batteries. Once they're dead, once they're used, that's it. Unless it was a very smart farmer, he or she is going to be responsible for the cost of the cleanup. These batteries excrete a highly toxic chemical into the ground, which seeps into the groundwater. Once this chemical seeps into the groundwater, this land is not good for anything else ever again. If you drive by the solar farms in Martin County, you can look at all the trees that were planted around the fence in order to hide these solar panels. This foliage is dying. That land cannot sustain life once these solar panels are in place. The solar farm produced less than point zero four of the energy that we consume. The energy that it does produce is not shipped into Beaufort County. It is shipped out of the area. So, we would not even see use of the energy in our area. So, these are the facts. There is no benefit to Beaufort County for allowing this solar field to be placed next to Teresia School. Thank you.
We have time for one more.
Good evening. I apologize for being late. I'm Herb May. I live at 6338 Christian School Road in Pantego. Good evening. I'd like to speak about the economics of using prime farmland for a solar facility. It just, it doesn't benefit Beaufort County. If we take six hundred acres of some of the finest and highest-producing farmland in the world out of production, Beaufort County stands to lose about $450,000 worth of income from corn and around $133,000 from the wheat crop every year. This money is reinvested every year in our area to seed companies, fertilizer companies, tractors and equipment, trucking businesses, fuel, also the retail stores and grocery stores. The grocery stores sell bread that's made from wheat and lots of products made from corn. And all of these companies employ people that live and spend their money in Beaufort County as well. That's the farm dollars. The school side, if enrollment does decline, those are jobs lost and there's less income spent in the county. And if the school closes, that's seven hundred thousand, right at $700,000 a year and twenty-five jobs that the county loses. The total loss for Beaufort County could be as much as $1.3 million. Is this what we want to give up for a solar facility that might employ one to three people and pay maybe $55,000 in taxes? It's probably going to depreciate. I just don't see where the county benefits from this at all. I'd like to ask for a nine-month moratorium to work on a set of guidelines for solar facility construction. I'm not against solar energy. I am against the proposed location for this facility and the impact that it'll have on our community and our economy. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. We're down to item number H, items for presentation by the Health Department.
She has my presentation. After I stated, I'm Janelle Lewis. I'm with the Beaufort County Health Department, and I am here this evening just to present on our yearly SACH, which stands for the State of the County Health Report. Before I get started, I will make a statement that the SACH report is an annual report. It is always available on our website at bchd.net. In addition to our community health assessment, we'd be happy to share that with you. If you ever would like a hard copy, we'd be more than happy as well to print that off or even send it to you. Just give us a call and make that request, and we would love for you to have that. So, it looks like it's a little small, so I apologize for that. But the first thing the SACH always covers is the basics, and it's what we call a glance at our county. So, it goes over the population, and as of 2015, if you didn't know, we had about forty-seven thousand individuals in Beaufort County. The big part that we always focus on as well, because it does directly correlate a lot of our health effects as well, but nineteen point two percent are below the poverty level, and then we have about seventy-one percent Caucasians and twenty-five percent African-Americans are our top two races. Go ahead. Continued, we always cover the top three leading causes of death, which in ours is cancer, disease of the heart, and chronic lower respiratory disease. We at the Health Department find and utilize this data to help guide our efforts throughout the year and as well as planning ahead of time, but it guides our efforts, our education, and everything that we provide. We want to make sure that, you know, we're not just doing things to do things, but we're doing things that make an impact and directly affect things that are, you know, impactful to Beaufort County. Our top four priority issues identified in our 2014 community health assessment were a chronic disease which incorporates heart disease and diabetes, weight management, nutrition, obesity, cancer, followed by access to care, which does include mental health. Our community health assessment is done every four years. We're about to gear up for our next one in 2018. So, that kind of replaces our annual SACH for those years, but that'll be coming out soon, and we highly encourage you, if you would, please listen out for us. We're going to be reaching out with surveys to get the voice of the people, and a lot of people always want to reach out and make their voice heard, and when we come out with the community health assessment to, you know, figure out what's going on in the county, we need the help of the citizens and everyone in Beaufort County to get those out there and to provide us feedback and provide us data because it really does make a big difference in that report. Focusing on our first priority issue is heart disease and diabetes. The graph on your left is the heart disease rate. Beaufort County is the blue line, so our biggest issue right off the bat is that we are above the rate of North Carolina. The good news is it's on a downward trend, so there's the positive. But as you can see, heart disease for both NC and Beaufort have decreased, which is what we like to see. We hope to continue to make efforts to continue this downward trend, but we would also like to steep below North Carolina and get ahead of them as well. The graph on your right is representation of diabetes. The rate in Beaufort County is higher than the state rate, but the big point to take home about that is if you can see, the blue line is not only above North Carolina, but we've actually had a slight increase. So, we really want to focus a lot on diabetes prevention efforts as well as managing those that have already been diagnosed with diabetes. Our second issue is weight management, nutrition, and obesity. I am sure those are not the first time you've heard that that's an issue in any county, but it is an issue in Beaufort County and continues to be. Weight management, nutrition, and obesity are large risk factors for a lot of our other health issues that we have in the county, including heart disease, diabetes, and cancer. So, it is a big effort and a continual effort of not only Beaufort County Health Department, but multiple areas around us as well. Some of the action steps that we have done, can you get back real quick? Thank you. Some of the action steps that we have done focusing on weight management, nutrition, and obesity is our Faithful Families Program, which we've had great success with that, but it actually utilizes churches and groups of, from all over the county. But it's a nine-week program that incorporates not only the education base, but we actually get people hands-on cooking and cooking healthy things that maybe they've never even tasted before. You can ask Bishop McIntyre, he would have never ate a tuna burger, and after tasting it, it's one of his new favorite foods. So, from that program, we not only hope to, like, educate them, but they go home and they share these recipes, and hopefully it kind of creates a trend as well and maybe even an interest in learning other healthier options as well. We do tons of large media campaigns through either social media. We have PAN Coalition, which is a physical activity and nutrition coalition, as well as a Healthy Eating and Active Living Task Force, all that focus highly on creating programs or initiatives focused around weight management, nutrition, and obesity. Third priority issue is cancer. Our top five leading causes of cancer in order are trachea, bronchus, and lung, followed by prostate, breast, then colon, rectum, and anus, and followed by pancreas. Some of our action steps that we've done at the Health Department, tons of media publications, whether it's through the newspaper, quarterly newsletters, we've even done infographics focusing on breast cancer and colorectal cancer, that restaurants in Beaufort County have partnered with us where they focus them on, you know, on their tables. And so, you don't think a lot of the time that you are bored maybe waiting for your food, you know, we never have enough time these days, but it gave people something a little fun to do as well as educational that hopefully it kind of stuck where it's at their table, they at least had something to occupy their time. And then also our 411, we offered free cancer screenings, which we had about two hundred and fifty people at the, not this past year, but the year before that, because that's a reflection of that event. We're a partner with Viden, and we're able to offer free screenings. And our last priority issue is access to care. I'm sure I'm not the only one who has maybe had to make a doctor's appointment and there's not enough slots. This issue directly affects all of our patients in Beaufort County, whether there's an issue and they can't get in, but if our, you know, community and county are struggling with following up with doctors or, you know, calling or not knowing other resources in which they can have education, that can be a cycle that we want to get out of as well. But more issues with the care have led to people going without or seeking help in other ways, whether it's to their neighbor or their pastors. So, it is a cycle and something we try to at least just educate about of other resources or other ways that maybe if it is educational based that we can get it out there. The next issues that we focus in our SACH are new and emerging issues. So, if anyone hasn't heard about Zika, that was a big thing of 2016, but Zika is spread mostly through the bite of an infected mosquito, a certain species called, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing this right, eighties. Zika can be passed through pregnancy to a fetus, as well, there is no vaccine or medication. So, part of 2016, our environmental health department, they've always collected mosquitoes and, you know, identified species, which, if you cannot see that graph, and we have it on our website as well, the number of collected species per area, so Aurora, Blunt's Creek, Chalkowinity, you can always go up there and see those numbers if there's an influx or whatever you prefer, but that is kept monthly. But in addition to that, we did a tip and toss campaign because if you do not know, mosquitoes breed in water, sitting water, and that's where, if you're going to have any out there, then it's likely that could be a high breeding zone. So, we went into schools with second and third graders, and our environmental health did an awesome job of educating these kids of, you know, how mosquitoes breed, and, you know, if you see a dog bowl out there that's been sitting a while, it really does help to tip it so there's not any standing water. As well as we, our Board of Health in November passed a rabies rule, which basically it just loosened a little bit of the guidelines regarding quarantine, which allowed owners a lot less... a lot less cost, but also more time with their dogs or their animals, excuse me. And not only that, but it's still at the best of the public health interest of those owners. Next, we also did a 5K Glow Run. We focused on diabetes, as I said, it's a major or emerging and continuing emerging issue in Beaufort County, so we did a shine a light on diabetes. It was awesome. We were even doing a family fitness 5K this year as well to hopefully encourage that side of, you know, getting fit, but also losing weight or whatever it is as a family, because it's generational as well. And we also had, like I said, our 401 event. And then in addition, we did a take-back event. We were able to work with the Sheriff's Department. They do a take-back event every year, but we were able to contribute just a little bit, very minor, regarding publication of it. We had a little bit of funds that we were able to put in the newspaper and hopefully encourage individuals with any leftover medication or medication they are no longer using to take it to Lowe's where they had the event. They had a huge, huge turnout, as they always do. I wish I could even remember the number, but it was pounds and pounds and pounds. But the importance of that take-back event was to encourage people not to keep it at home, because whether grandkids or whoever, whether you have older kids that know better that are, know where there's spare medications left over that grandma, grandpa, or mom or dad aren't using, but also kids who may think it's candy or things like that. So it was a huge success. And then we also promoted in our SACH about Haven's Playground, because that opened in 2016. And if you haven't been out there, it's beautiful, but it's an all-inclusive playground for all. Continued, as I said, diabetes has been a big focus of Beaufort County Health Department. Diabetes Prevention Program started in 2016. We started our first group with the Department of Social Services. It is a year-long program, so it is a commitment. And right off the bat, even in the first half, we've had someone that has lost 30 pounds and it's only halfway through the program. So so far, we have been successful. The group is small but mighty. The other project we did was Project Lazarus, which was revolving around drugs as well. But the grant allowed us the opportunity to train two Beaufort County School Resource Officers in a new program. It's, I would say, correlated to DARE as best possible. And then also, we purchased medication lock boxes, going back to that effort where if I do have medications or prescriptions, that I have a special code lock box where no one can get it in or no one can get into the box. It's shatterproof, it's everything. I think the biggest problem we ran into is people forgetting the codes, but I don't know how to fix that. The lock boxes, we, the one picture you see up there was done at the senior center. We had a group of about 30. We've also raffled on, raffled another 25 to, another 25 at the senior expo. Hopefully, like I said, the more people that we can get to at least think about where they keep their medications, how they protect them, and how they're protecting their loved ones from possibly getting them or themselves, it's just a part of that project. We also implemented a Bell Haven interactive walking trail at the Boys and Girls Club. We had staff go on their day off. That's skills right there. Painting, putting in posts and signs, putting together. But this interactive trail is not just a walking trail, but they have 10 fitness stations, so, you know, squats or jumping jacks and things like that. But as you see up there, they even have hopscotch. So it's hopefully an encouragement way not only to get active, but active as a family, where parents and kids can work out together. I've already talked about Faithful Families, Edimore, those are the two churches that concluded in 2016, St. John's and Ware Creek. And then our Healthy Beginnings Program. This Healthy Beginnings Program, we were able to bring on a coordinator and it provides prenatal as well as sticks with the kid until they are two. It is for African-American, Latina mothers. The care coordinator provides at least six home visits, a minimum monthly contact, whether in person or by phone, is able to link the mom or family with support services and resources. She is able to provide referrals, one-on-one education support, and coordinate group education sessions. The goal of that program is overall to enrich and create a positive parenting experience and hopefully healthier outcomes for mother and baby as well as decrease infant mortality. 2016, if you have forgotten, we also experienced Hurricane Matthew. We put in there regarding our environmental health. If you don't know, they're awesome. They were able to get back up and running all our food establishments, 144 within just three days. Cleanup kits were made available for homes that might have experienced minor damage, as well as Beaufort County Health Department and the Red Cross worked to organize and operate our shelters, where we had 45 residents and 15 flood impacted that were displaced. We also held a blood drive where we outdid our goal of nine and hit 12 units. And then there was also a Chaco-Indy interactive walking trail, like I mentioned, just like the Bell Haven one, that was put in in May 2016, and that was done through United Way. So in conclusion, like I said, this is a report that we like to just, you know, focus on, one, our health issues that are going on, two, how we're combating it each and every day. And we're working to better understand, you know, the many factors, the barriers, and everything that's affecting Beaufort County. And we've been working really hard to hopefully initiate new programs, education and services to create a healthier tomorrow for Beaufort County. Thank you, guys. Are there any questions?
We still have a few seconds left.
I have a few seconds.
I was watching the clock.
Well, are there any questions with a few seconds left?
Any, any questions or comments? It's on page 208 in our book where you look at the total number of mosquitoes collected. Bell Haven and Pantica didn't make the top 10 list. Top six, top six.
Well, it's not, it's not actually like a top list. Those are where our instruments that collect mosquitoes are located. So those are by areas.
If you don't have one in the Bell Haven Pantica area, I would suggest that you get one there.
Well, I'll talk to the supervisor about that. How about that?
Anybody else?
Janelle, on your diabetes graph, we were tracking the state average there pretty tight. And then it looks like in six through 10 or seven through 11, it spiked. Have y'all identified any general idea why that? Because we were tracking right along with them and then we just spiked up.
No. We can always make assumptions regarding, you know, we're in the South, we love fried chicken. I love fried chicken. You know, physical activity if we are not so active. But also, not that we're behind the curve, but, you know, we just got DPP, which is a preventive program, up and going. Some of the more, you know, I would say city-like states have had programs up and going for a couple of years now. So they could be reaching or they could be a little bit ahead of the curve regarding education and prevention-wise and also management of those that are already diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. But no, we can't say that we've pinpointed exactly why we hit the mountain there.
And maybe, maybe we're identifying more people now than we were back then.
Yeah. My hope, I always like to say that, that we are reaching more people and able to identify. Because if somebody does have diabetes and are unaware of it and aren't dealing with it or aren't taking care of it properly, the results are not good. So we hope we are identifying more, that they can treat it or hopefully even prevent it, but hopefully treating it and living a healthy lifestyle.
Any other comments?
I have a question. The hard copies, got more detail than the slides?
Yes, much.
I'd like to get a copy of the hard copy.
Yes, sir. I'll be more than happy.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're down to item number I. Items for discussion, and this is gonna be led by David Butcher and Alan Meyer. They're gonna speak on the Terraceau Solar Farm and their concerns. Once again, I would remind you, we'll allow you 15 minutes for your both presentation, and then we'll have dialogue between the commissioners and both speakers. That's not 15 minutes for you, David, 15 per hour.
I appreciate the commissioners allowing me to come and speak tonight. When you, when you go by a solar factory and it's not beside your house, you're pretty ambivalent to it. When all of a sudden they're planting one in your backyard, it piques your interest. So I'm gonna speak to some of the problems that I think we have as a county and ways that we can improve our policy and our ordinance. North Carolina is the second largest solar factory in the state. The reasons for this are that the electricity providers are forced to buy renewable energy because it's mandated by the state. The solar facilities also receive favorable tax incentives and government-backed loans. For example, solar factory owners only pay 20% of property value on their property taxes. The third reason is that we do have cheap land in our area, and that may not seem that way to us, but when compared to other states, it is less expensive. The fourth reason is that renewable energy is also needed by the PJM and beyond. We even have solar factories in North Carolina that supposedly supply renewable energy to Boston, Massachusetts, and our grid doesn't even reach that. Where the way they're doing that is that they're doing that because they're trading credits using a credit system. So what is a PJM? The PJM Interconnection is a regional transmission organization that coordinates the movement of wholesale electricity in parts of Delaware, Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Maryland, Michigan, New Jersey, North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Virginia, Washington DC, and West Virginia. So this PJM Interconnection, it serves in total 65 million people. And solar factory owners can get a certificate of need from the North Carolina Utilities Commission based on the needs of the PJM Interconnection. So my point in all this is that by bringing this up, is that we may think that, well, this is only gonna go for another year or two and then it may play out, but in fact, we really don't know how long it might go on. The reason for that is in the next slide. And this shows the different percentages that each state has for renewable energy. You can see North Carolina is two, there's actually two for North Carolina. One is 10% and one is 12 and a half, because the utilities in North Carolina have different requirements based on whether they're a co-op or commercial entity. But some of these, if you look at, say, Washington DC, their renewable energy goal is 20%. Now where are they gonna get 20% renewable energy in Washington DC? And the answer is they're not. They're gonna get it in North Carolina, most likely. So again, my point in bringing this up is for us to understand that this situation that we're in is probably not a temporary situation. It's just gonna build as we go forward. Just a brief review of the design and build process of these projects. The first thing the developers do is they locate land for their project. The second thing they do is they obtain a certificate of need and convenience from the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And this isn't very, this is not a very stringent process. And the reason I say that is they have not been denied a permit yet from the Utilities Commission. So that tells you that, you know, if they, if they, if they jump through the hoops, then they're gonna get their permit from the state. Now after that, then they have to go and they get the county, state, and federal permits that they need. And in Beaufort County, after they do that, they build, they just build a facility. So when we think of some of the potential problems for Beaufort County that I've come up with, the first one is the decommissioning cost. In our solar ordinance, and I won't read that, it's in, I'd copy it right out of our solar ordinance, ordinance, but the point of this is, if the factory owner or landowner cannot pay for decommissioning, the legal responsibility falls on the county by ordinance. It is unlikely that the cost of removal would be recovered by the sale of the land at auction. The latest information suggests that it's gonna cost $10,000 per acre to decommission these facilities. So the solution I think that we need to think about is that we require the solar operators post a $10,000 per acre cash bond for the removal before being given a permit to construct by Beaufort County. This will protect the taxpayers in the event that the operator and landowner could not pay to have the stuff removed after it's used up. The second problem is that we, that we face is that a lot of these facilities, they want to modify the drainage and change the ditches around. Landowners in Beaufort County are draining using field ditches and canals. Modification to these ditches and canals can impact adjacent landowners. Also, if the existing drainage system is altered, the farmland may revert back to wetland, since the construction of a solar factory is considered a change of use by the US Army Corps of Engineers. And one thing that they always say, the solar developers, is that after we're finished with this, it can go back to farmland. Well, that's probably true in 95% of our state, but that's not, may not, may or may not be true in Beaufort County. If by changing these ditches and things around, it reverts back to wetland, then it can't be farmed again. So what's the solution for this? You really can't tell someone they can't ruin their land, but they need to know, the landowners need to know this upfront and, and understand what might happen to their land if the ditches are changed. The third thing is a property value loss. Developers contend that the property values are not affected by the construction and operation of solar facilities. Truthfully, we will not have a clear understanding of the effect of solar factories on adjacent property values in rural Beaufort County for several years. So I would suggest that we increase the setbacks for solar facilities. The first problem are safety issues. Beaufort County creates special safety concerns due to its unique topography and soil types, flat topography prone to flooding during heavy rains, and highly organic soils that will catch fire and burn. So I propose a solution that we require solar factory operators to purchase special equipment needed to provide safety protection. An example of this is the Terraceau location. When we get a hurricane, there's water in places out there four and five feet deep. So if somebody gets hurt out there, we're gonna need a way to go out there and get them and get them out of there. Also, I think we should prohibit solar factory development on areas that will support ground fire. The only way to put out ground fires is to haul a lot of water. And if you've got solar panels all up and down the field, it's gonna make it really tough to get a tractor-trailer of water to the back of the field to put a fire out. The fifth problem is the damage, is the damage to our existing economy. Agricultural fields taken out of production cause reductions of revenue that flow throughout the community. One acre of corn production represents approximately $800 of potential revenue for various Beaufort County businesses. Fertilizer and seed dealers, farm equipment dealers, automobile dealers, grocery stores, hardware stores, and many other businesses depend on production agriculture for their existence. Additionally, when all the associated benefits are included, the value represents $2,400 per acre of value to businesses within North Carolina. And this is just an interesting fact. If you took the corn off this land and you fed it to landhens, it would be enough corn to produce 24 million eggs in one year. So we need to be prepared to offer economic aid to persons damaged by solar factory development as a county. In conclusion, a person should have the right to use their property as they wish. The exercise of this right, however, should not damage adjacent property owners. I recommend that the Beaufort County Commission fulfill its duty and amend the solar farm ordinance in order to better protect the citizens of Beaufort County, North Carolina. I would also recommend that a nine-month moratorium on solar factory permits be enacted so that the solar farm ordinance can be improved.
Thank you, David. We'll take questions after. You could, if you will, just have a seat down there.
Commissioners, Brian, others, thank you very much for having me here tonight. Excuse me if any emotion gets in the way. My name is Alan Meyer. I live one mile from the school and the proposed site, 5121 Terraceau Road, and I'm speaking as a concerned parent and representative of the school board. I have three children currently attending Terraceau. I'm still getting used to saying that, as my eldest recently graduated a few weeks ago. I am here this evening because I know that you, our county commissioners, can do something about what's going on in Terraceau, that you can do the right thing, that you can do what you've been called to do for this county, its residents, and the people, churches, and school in Terraceau and the neighboring community of Delta City. I am here tonight because having a solar farm erected around this school will suffocate it. Parents and prospective parents may feel they don't want their children spending every day, all day, for 12, 13... all day, for 12, 13 years surrounded by solar panels, as well as a substation and an acre-sized battery facility. Our school is a small school, born of and sustained by the blood, sweat, and sacrifice, yes, and tears of multiple generations of parents. Even a small drop in enrollment could have disastrous effects on the school. Were the school to shut down, the county stands to lose 18 or more jobs, and possibly those people as well, along with all they contribute to our county and society. Our community and school have been taken advantage of, kept in the dark ironically, until it was almost too late to do anything of substance. Wilkinson Solar and April Montgomery's Company REIT were not upfront with the school, but kept the plan hidden until the cat was out of the bag, just days before the deadline with the North Carolina Utilities Commission. We've not been given due process, common courtesy, nor any neighborly consideration in this situation. The fact that the county and its commissioners knew that such a project was about to be implemented and did not contact the school seems or feels reprehensible to us, yet we know there's still a chance to resolve it now. The state's commissioners told us that our county commissioners can affect change here, and we're asking you to do so. You've been elected to protect the citizens of Beaufort County and do what is right for them. You have an obligation to do what is right for Beaufort County, what is right for Ms. Trudy Raspus, who has taken legal action to fight this project herself, what's right for the families of David Butcher, Stacy Raspus Jones, Macon Raspus, John and Devin Stalban, and all the other residents of Terraceea and Delta City. And also what's right for the people of Terraceea Church of Christ and Terraceea Christian Reform Church. Here we meet in Washington, North Carolina, where a tulip festival used to draw thousands of people to Beaufort County. Down the street on a downtown storefront is a huge photo of three women picking tulips in Terraceea. What a beautiful promotion for our county and the beauty and history of this area. Ironically, the land that once grew acres and acres of tulips now stands to lose that ground, heritage and community forever. You may have heard that Terraceea Christian School has existed for 80 years. Well, it hasn't just existed, it has taught and cared for hundreds of children who have gone on to outstanding academic institutions and careers across the county, state, and nation. Our past graduates are now working in all sorts of fields. Some are nurses, possibly taking care of your loved ones right now, and taking care of you and I in the near future. They are teachers, loving and caring for your grandchildren and their children's children. They are in the Coast Guard Marines and Army, protecting every single one of us right now. They are in the FBI. They are business owners, pastors, all contributing in very special and needed ways to our society. Terraceea Christian School has helped train three generations of outstanding Christian citizens and hopes to do so for many years to come. What will replacing this school with a solar factory do? Hire one part-time person or a herd of goats to keep the grass down? An annual training for a volunteer fire department so that they know what to do if something blows up? We believe that a nine-month moratorium should be enacted. This will give Terraceea Christian School time to evaluate potential effects of this solar factory on the school, and it will allow us time, or allow for time, to conduct the necessary rewriting of the Beaufort County solar ordinance that to us currently reads like it was written by Invenergy themselves. We know that property values will go down if this project continues. And we know that a worse site, a worse geographic site could not be selected for such a facility. This place was a swamp once upon a time. The elevation of this site ranges from as high as just over 14 feet, where both the school resides and where the battery pack is planned to be placed, down to just over eight feet. And some think Terraceea is flat. So you haven't just placed a project in a former swamp, but in the absolute lowest spot where the swamp drained out to the sound. Someone involved in this process recently, and I guess I heard it earlier tonight, said that Beaufort County was the easiest county to get this done in. Well, being easy is not something anyone wants to be known for. Other counties and their commissioners are rising up to what's going on in regards to the solar industry. Other commissioners are having to brave some tough decisions and are doing so, and I urge you to do the same. You know that the name Terraceea is said to mean where heaven meets earth, or heavenly earth. Both very apt names for this beautiful spot. If this embarrassment is allowed to happen to stain this community and this county, Terraceea will no longer be able to live up to that name. Beaufort County, as I know, or as I understand, has not given Wilkinson Solar a building permit yet, and I urge you not to. You may consider them to have a vested interest in moving forward, but I ask, when was Terraceea Christian School considered vested in Beaufort County? Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll take questions or comments from commissioners. This, this one's for you, since nobody else has asked, and I'll ask. You've raised a question as it relates to drainage. And I, I agree, when you, when you do what they're talking about doing, it's going to affect the drainage of neighbors. And do you, do you think there's a way that they can get around that by doing tile drainage on some of that land?
Well, the problem with tile is that it's only, it's not as effective as surface water drainage. And when you get big rains, it takes time for the water to run through the land into the tile and leave. So it would help, but I don't think it would completely remedy the problem. Additionally, once these panels are in place, there can't be any more land leveling or anything like that on the site. So anything that would settle would be low areas that would be very difficult to get out of the fields.
Okay. I have a question. Go ahead, Commissioner Richards.
Have you or your group approached Wilkinson, Wilkinson about getting setbacks that would be more to your liking?
Well, the commission encouraged everyone to communicate before their final decision, and that's an ongoing process. I would say that hasn't been completely resolved, whether there'll be any additional setbacks or not.
Are you in communication with them?
Yes.
Okay.
I got, go ahead.
Go ahead. I yield to Commissioner Bozziak.
On your chart here, on page two, the percentages, North Carolina 10 to 12.5%. As you probably know, back in 2007, the lobbyists were very active in the state, and they were very active back in 2007 also. And they got a bill pushed through the House and Senate that mandated ever increasing amounts. And they're at it again. There's now a bill pending in the House, it may have already passed the House, H 589, where again, will increase the amounts of power. And I do agree with you that a lot of this power is going to other jurisdictions. I'm not against property rights, and so I don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But I do agree with you that the original ordinance is probably lacking in a number of areas. You made some very good comments about the soil. I've read a number of articles. There's a number of articles on various websites that talk about what happens to the soil and the cost of rejuvenating that soil to bring it back. There's a lot of articles out there to talk about property values and decreasing property values in surrounding areas, both for existing owners of property and anybody that wants to commend the value of property does go down, according to these studies. I've read articles that show that it's going to have an impact on farming and income in the county of Beaufort. I've read articles that say that Beaufort County is a delight for them because it's flat, has a lot of usable land. So there is a lot of unknowns associated. And I personally believe if it wasn't for the tax write-offs, the benefits that we're paying for as county residents, and also as federal taxes we pay, that they wouldn't be using this. And the power company wouldn't be buying it unless they were mandated to buy it. So I enjoyed your presentations. I thought they were very insightful, very detailed, as were some of the comments made by the residents. What we can do as county commissioners, we've made some comments about the ordinance. We made one comment that was probably written, or looks like it was written by a power company. I don't know if that's true or not, I wasn't here at the time. But when it talks about 50-foot setback and 75-foot of evergreens, somebody made a comment about the evergreens aren't growing. And you go out even to one in Chucklewindy and see they've been in the ground for about three years, I believe. And a lot of them are dying and haven't grown at all. So, you know, there's a lot of things that you've stated that have hit home.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Mr. Brandon.
I've always been concerned, we had a statement up here a few minutes ago, I've always been concerned with what happens to the solar panels after, after 20 years. And by the way, I wrote that ordinance. So, and I find it reprehensible for you to throw us all under the same blanket stating that we knew about it so far. It's up to the landowner and the solar farm people to make their deal. And then they come to us, we didn't know anything about it.
Well, I apologize, sir. It was my understanding that they've applied for their building permit and stuff.
Well, just because they've applied for a building permit isn't a sign that we know about.
I, I think to correct the record, it's a inquire. Is that, would you like to comment?
I can, yes. They called and actually sent a letter to our planning director asking if they would review the conceptual plan and let them know if it were in general conformity with the ordinance. And his letter back to them was, yes, based upon what you've sent me, this generally complies with what our ordinance, how our ordinance reads, and you need to submit your plans for the building permit and send them to this address. We have not received that yet.
Can I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Brandon.
As I'll state, just because someone has applied for something, we don't know it unless the county manager were to tell us, or the planner was to come to us and tell us. So there's a lot of things that happen in Beaufort County that we find out a couple of weeks later. And everybody that I talk to on the phone, my heart goes out for you. But our hands are tied to a certain extent, too. And I'd be more glad to look and think about more of this moratorium and see how people look at it. But right now, our hands are tied.
The, the question as it relates to a moratorium, I'm going to ask our county attorney, David Francisco, if he might address that at this point in time. What would a moratorium, if we did a moratorium, would it affect this project?
I'm, I'm not sure that it would. As I understand where things are right now, I believe they have sought a permit from the state, and that's already being processed. We do not have a, an ordinance that would control beyond, in Beaufort County, control beyond the planting of trees and where the fences were, how close to the roadways, and that, that situation that we addressed several years ago. So the question about having a moratorium at this point, what are we, what are we, if it was a nine-month situation, where are we going with that? What is, what is the purpose to get to the end to know, to have more facts? But if you've got nothing to enforce, it just, it just seems to me that this is, this is in a situation where they have applied to the state for what they're, they're trying to get. So I think it would be very, very difficult. It also seems to me that, that these folks have a legal resource, not a resource, a legal recourse with the courts. And to show these things that, that they are saying, I don't know, I mean, I just read something about Trudy Raspus, and that deals with the leasing of the, of the property, apparently. Had not seen that before just now. Is there in fact a lawsuit pending over this? I don't know. And if there's not, with, with these kind of complaints, I sort of, as an attorney, I wonder why. You're asking the commissioners to do something. You, you have a legal recourse. Now, you know, I have no way of guaranteeing that it would be successful or not. Understand what I'm saying. But there are such things as injunctions, temporary restraining orders, there's all of those sorts of things. You're talking about a moratorium.
Well, I would suggest that even if we can't affect this particular situation, if we can strengthen our ordinance so that it does protect the residents of the county, so we're not left on the hook cleaning up these things 25 years from now. So, I mean, there's really two things. There's the immediate situation.
David, if you, if you'll move that mic. Thank you.
It's two different situations as I see it. There's an immediate concern, and then there's a long-term, term concern 20 to 30 years from now. And I don't want to have to pay for cleaning up my neighbor's stuff if they can. And I'm, I'm not saying that about my neighbor, I'm saying that about it as a resident. You know, there's nothing wrong with a person being able to do with their property what they want to do, but it shouldn't come at the expense of their neighbor after they've done what they want to do.
Mr. Chairman. Let me, Commissioner Langley, just, Commissioner Langley.
And prior to, to right now, I mean, everything that I had learned was pretty much that the ship had pretty much sailed as far as we were concerned. But now as far as doing something about future events, that is something I know that we can do. What's happened right now is, from everything I have learned, is that we really can't change anything for this present situation. But for future events, there's something we can do. And I certainly don't have a problem with doing that.
And, and it's on our agenda at the end of resolution, which addresses taking a look at the current ordinance. Commissioner Richards.
I think the best way that we can empower Terraceea's school to get where they want to go is to say that we will take no action until negotiations between the school and the company have completely broken down. If we say that, then they have something to use for their negotiations. Whereas if we go charging into making changes, at this point in time, reviewing ordinances and things like that, we have disempowered them. And I think the commissioners simply say, we're withholding our judgment because we know there's nothing we can do now until those negotiations have broken down, that we have given them a club.
Go ahead. In regards, sort of to what Commissioner Brandon, David Francisco said, you know, we're not always, we aren't fully aware of the processes and how that works. And sure, it would take more than one explanation for me to remember the way things go, but this seemed to be the logical way. And as David mentioned, thinking about the future, I think about just other schools in North Carolina, or Beaufort County. Maybe Punggol Christian is pretty much wrapped up with just, based on their side with residential homes, but Unity Christian across the road is, across the river, has fields all around it. Maybe they don't have the power line, but the point is, we're not just thinking about Terraceea, but as far as changing the ordinance in a way that would help potential issues with schools down the road.
I, I have a question now, Alan. Is, is there any solution at all that the school sees as it relates to relocating the battery storage facility to a different site and increasing the setback? Is that an option?
From what we've been told, they, they can't move that batteries pack away from From what we've been told, they can't move that batteries pack away from those power lines, and that sits it right there behind the school.
That's not, that's not what I've been told. I've been told that it can be relocated.
I've been told the same thing.
How about on the setbacks?
That is something that, and I'm no longer on the board, but as of last week, my term is up, so I guess I'm thankful for that. But, you know, it's been an honor to serve. But no, that's something that's in discussion. There was a meeting this past Wednesday in Raleigh at the North Carolina, or hosted by, I believe, if I'm using that terminology correctly, the Utilities Commission. I received a call on Friday afternoon at 4:15 PM from April Montgomery stating her message, she left a message stating that they had contacted David Butcher's attorneys, who had supposedly been trying to contact our attorney, the school's attorney, to let them know about a meeting on Wednesday afternoon. And I emailed her back on the weekend and said it'd just be best if you contacted our attorney directly rather than try to go through other people's attorneys. They contacted him on Monday, and he could not attend the meeting on Wednesday, which was in the middle of the week, middle of the day. So, from 4:15 PM on a Friday, it's a little late to get those ducks in a row.
One other comment I'd like to share since this is a public meeting, there's a lot of people out there that don't understand, Beaufort County has no jurisdiction when it comes to the determination of the value for the county tax. That is, if I understand, it's under a state statute where we can only tax 20% of the cost. And that's not the cost of the land, that's the cost of the equipment that's installed. And that's on a sliding depreciation, and I saw Bobby Parker back there, I think, right over 18 years or 20 years?
It's the T-18 schedule. I'm not sure exactly what.
I think it's over 18-year period. But that's nothing the county commissioners have control over. To talk specific, if you take a $100 million investment in Beaufort County and you do the math on it and you average it, we're looking at an average of about $60,000 a year. And the increase in the tax on the land itself would be probably another 20 to 22,000. It's not, it's not $2 million or some big figure on an annual basis. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone here tonight, and for those that'll be listening to the presentation in nights to come, understand that. David?
I think it's also important to remember that there is some tax being collected on the land now from the regular property tax.
Yes.
And there's also a lot of, well, I don't know what the county sales tax is, but the money that's spent and travels throughout the economy is also a tax. It's been my perception about all this that the solar industry always emphasizes the benefits. However, they never recognize any of the things that are damaged or hurt. You know, they're unwilling to even admit that. So, that's all I'm suggesting is, when we hear these numbers, let's think about what we have already and not just throw that away.
I've been serving for the last two years on the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners on the Ag Steering Committee, and we've discussed this at least three different times. And we're not moving forward on solving some of the problems that's being raised in the ag community, so. Any other commissioner?
I've got one other thing.
Commissioner Brand.
I'm going to ask this question. I feel sure that you all have, but I want to know for sure. I know a little bit about the landowner's situation in school, but have you all had negotiations with the landowners themselves about how you all feel about it, or are you just leaving it alone?
You guys don't have to answer that if you don't. I mean, we're.
To me, it looks like that if there's a problem, go to the landowner and tell him your problem.
Okay, well, I guess we were under the assumption that they've signed a lease, and while we, most of us here tonight have said or said something to the effect that we respect the rights of landowners. So, our battle was never with Ms. Trudy or her family, so to speak. We're just fighting.
The company.
Yeah, what's going on there, so.
Any other commissioner? Thank you very much. And if you want to stick around, we'll have a discussion at the very end on the resolution, but it's going to be towards the end. But thank each one of you, and thank each one for the public comments. And at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute break. Thanks. Please, please take a seat. We're now down to item number J, items for decision. And the first one is the child support contract revision and computer hardware purchase, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you are aware, the county is currently under contract with Pamlico Consulting Services Incorporated, Young Williams PC, to provide child support services for the county. Due to a change in the business relationship between those contracting entities, the contract is being revised to remove Pamlico Consulting Services Incorporated and have Young Williams PC as the sole provider of those services. There are some additional changes that have been proposed in the contract from Young Williams, such as adjusting the term of the contract to the state fiscal year. It's currently on the calendar year. They'd also like to extend the contract by one additional year. They propose reducing the contract compensation by about $20,000 and amending the paying responsibilities for some of those items. You have attached to your agenda, a outline of a meeting that we had with representatives from Young Williams on May 30th that addresses each of those proposed changes. You also have a copy in track change format of the contract, the current contract with the changes they proposed. So, just on page 216, you'll see, under the updated contract, they're asking that in that, in that update, they remove all references to Pamlico Consulting Services. Also, they'd like to change, again, as I talked about, change it to the state fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30th. It's currently under the calendar year, January to December. And then, after making that change, they're asking that you extend it by one additional year to help them make up some costs. They had originally proposed that the contract administrator be moved to DSS. They've said they're fine with leaving that currently the way it is. They're proposing a reduction of about $20,000 in the first year of the contract or this upcoming contract, this upcoming contract year. And that's based on some changes in responsibilities for testing fees. First, the genetic testing fees, they are current, under this contract, they're currently paid by Young Williams, and now they would be paid by the county. Once you pay those fees, then if those genetic testing fees are deemed by the court to be repaid by the custodial parent, or the non-custodial parent, the parental, whoever's deemed, if they are the parent, if they are the parent of the child, and they are required by order to pay that back, then they eventually make that payment, and those funds would eventually come back to the county. Also, the court filing fees, which are currently paid by Young Williams, they would be, they would continue to pay those, and we would reimburse them 100% for that. Again, those court filing fees, if they're determined by the court to be repaid by the parent, then those fees would eventually make them, make their way back to the county. It may take some time. And then out of court, out of county service process fees, which are currently paid by Young Williams in their entirety, we would now reimburse Young Williams for those costs, and we would pay that 100% and then file for that reimbursement again. And that is why they proposed decreasing the contract amount by $20,000. So, that's the first part of this. Carla West, who is with Young Williams and manages their North Carolina operation, is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have regarding that. Also, with the contract, there are some standard attachments that go with DSS contracts across the state. Those attachments in general are things like conflict of interest attachment, they certify that they have no overdue taxes, federal certification regarding environmental tobacco smoke, federal certification regarding lobbying, disbarment, HIPAA concerns, those kind of things that are typically standard attachments to contracts through DSS that the state asks be a part of that. Those were not originally a part of this first contract, and this contract's been going on for several years now. So, that is one of the amendments we would ask you to do. If you so desire to amend this contract, there are a couple of things that you really need, that you do need to do on this. And the other proposals, you have the opportunity to talk about whether you want to extend that contract or not. But the other things we would recommend to you is that you allow us to attach those standard attachments. They're the ones that are on every contract that comes over from DSS already. We don't have those in the book because we just got those, but they're the standard attachment that goes with it. So, we recommend that you do that as well. So, I'm not sure how you want to handle this, whether you want to handle it. This first, there is a second part of this. Under the existing contract you have, the county is required, over the life of that contract, not each year, but just over the life of that contract, to provide up to $50,000 to update computer equipment for the contractor. Over the years, we have not really done that. We have, we have provided surplus DSS equipment, is my understanding, on occasions to them. But we have never improved that system using the funds that were under the contract. They've asked that that be done now, and you have attached to this agenda item their request and their, and their price list or their, what they're going, what they propose to purchase and put in place under that. What we would need to do, and we've had some conversations with Young Williams about that, we would not be able to do that this year. We would look to do that in the new fiscal year so that we could file that for reimbursement through the state where you would get 66% of those funds back. So, Carla's here, DSS folks are here, if you have any questions on that side, I'd be glad answering you have. Commissioner Richardson serves as the administrator of that contract, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Booth.
Mr. Manager, how long ago did these people have this contract?
It was in place when I got here. I don't know how.
I think 2000, they proposed extension, extends it about a year and a half.
The proposed extension would extend it by one year. What they want to do is try to get it on the fiscal year, so it'd be an 18-month.
Yeah, I think I mentioned, excuse me, let me figure out if I can it. What I mentioned to the manager before, that I didn't necessarily support that, and I've changed my mind. I think it's a good idea at this point in time.
Would we bid it out or do anything? We just renew this contract? This is what I, this is my point.
Well, if you bid it out, my estimate is it's going to take you a year to bid it out. There's no advantage in not extending the contract from that standpoint, because it's a complex thing.
But the contract would be extended, what, five to six years?
No, no.
Is it annually or annual contract?
No, manager has the date.
Yeah, the current contract that you're under, now, this is the current contract that you're under, goes until December of 18. So, there is another year and a half on this one already, as it stands right now. They're simply asking you, first of all, to amend it to get on the state fiscal year, so it's July 1 to June 30th instead of January to December, which would extend it by six months. And then they're asking that you then further extend it by one additional year to June 30th of 2020. Now, I'm not sure how this contract got in place years ago.
Well, that contract was originally, we, well, give you a little history behind all this. That started off with DSS was doing this, Title IV program, I believe it's called, Deadbeat Dads to us commoners. And all that DSS ever came to the commissioners, we wanted more money, more money, more people. It took more people, more people, and more money. And the commissioners said, we're going to find somebody, a contractor, who can do this because we think we can do it cheaper. We went through a couple of bad contractors, but the bad contractors were better than us trying to do it ourselves. And we wound up with Young Williams in the partnership that's been dissolved. And that deal has worked really good. They haven't been back digging at us for money every time you turn around. They've run the business. They leave us alone as a contract administrator. Early on, I was heavily involved with what was going on, and then over a period of time, everything settled down and got to be standard operating procedure, and I wasn't that involved in it anymore. So, right now, it's a smooth working ship. If you want to go out and negotiate with somebody else to see if you can lower the price, which I think would be difficult to do, but that's fine to do. There are several other operators who provide the same services. What I would recommend for continuity of operations is that we extend it the way they want it. That gives us time to start talking to other people to see what else is out there. Now, this is an aside thing for the education of the public in general. A lot of people go to lawyers, with all due respect to county attorney, to lawyers and to other people to try to collect on child support services. The simple truth of the matter is, you don't have to do that. This particular department does that for you at about 1% of what you're going to pay a lawyer. Plus, if you get a lawyer involved, you wound up down in the clerk of court's office, and there are cases down there that are probably 30 years old. Things can die real quick with the right kind of opposition and the right kind of gameplay. So, going to the DSS, to the Title IV, to the contractor here is the smart way to do it because it doesn't cost you money. And that's why you hear the talk about the payment for the DNA test and all that sort of thing, because they're going to do the same thing. The reason that these computer systems need to be upgraded and updated, and they haven't been in quite a while, is for those of us that are using computers, that keep changing the game on you, as we all know, and that hasn't happened for some time. So, they're, technology-wise, they're far behind. Most people are not aware of it. These people have a lot of power when it comes to collecting money for you. They can get into the IRS system and find out all kinds of things about people that claim they don't have any money. If you're getting something like an unemployment compensation check coming, they get into that system, they can seize that. So, they need the computers. It's going to do a lot for them insofar as increasing their efficiency. We have never, since I've been the administrator of this, given them the money to upgrade their system, and that is definitely due, whichever way you go with this. Now, if you decide that you don't want me to continue as the administrator, that's fine. Please appoint another commissioner, because I know that DSS does a good job. They've got a lot of stuff on their plate. I think one of the reasons that this thing has been so successful is that we had a commissioner that was directly involved in it as the administrator, because you didn't get lost over with DSS. Now, we have a totally different DSS management now than we had then, but initially, there was some friction between DSS and Title IV. So, that has caused some problems, too. I don't think that would be the case today, but I think the commissioners should keep a firm handle on this thing because the program and the system has worked well.
Commissioner Langley.
Okay. My question is really very simple. It's a $20,000 reduction in the contract, but when you look at the fees for the out-of-county service as well as the paternity fees, how much money are we talking about that the county's now going to be responsible for? I mean, because the other thing is, we do understand that a lot of times with people who will not pay their child support, will not step up to the plate. Sometimes you, you never get to collect anything from them. So, I'm just wondering, how much money are we talking about?
Yeah. Carla, can you help with that?
I'm going to take a few more.
It's for Randy Walker's benefit.
Well, actually, what we did in that proposing of the $20,000 decrease was looked at what costs had been being paid over the last several years. And it's been slightly below $20,000 on average for the last several years. So, the reason why we recommended a $20,000 reduction is to make it cost-neutral for the county.
Okay. Thank you. You might, you might want to stay right there. Excuse me. Does anyone else have any questions? Now you can leave, thank you.
Is this time sensitive?
Sir? Is this time sensitive? It is. I mean, we need to, we would need some action on this simply because of the, of the business relationship that's changed, so we need to get that contract straight. I mean, if there's, if there's something else we need to do, please let us know.
If there's no other comment, I will entertain a motion.
Say move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? Vote six to one.
You can keep it. Just keep in mind, I'm willing to give it up.
One thing we all agree on, you're doing an excellent job. Okay, we're down to item number two. For decision is the support letter for Beaufort County Community College Grant Application.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Julie Crippen with the college. The letter you have in front of you, I respectfully request from you an affirmative vote to send this letter of support from you for a $200,000 grant sponsored by the North Carolina Community Foundation and Duke Energy. This is for an advanced manufacturing grant. The goal is to increase the enrollment in academic programs using successful apprenticeships. This is to prepare people in our county for full-time work in the advanced manufacturing industries. And within the grant, there's five strategies that we're using, all of them I think that you will be well aware of and would agree to. The first one is to bring together industry-related individuals to help us provide professional development to our instructors and to the counselors at the college. The second is to increase awareness of the career opportunities. The third is to enhance our recruiting efforts. The fourth is to help to skill up and train people for advanced employment. And the fifth is to decrease the time between the preparation and the coursework and their actual work placement. So, this grant will help us pay for the remote onsite teaching that we need to provide onsite teaching at the industries, a training conference for those professional development, and one math teacher at the college. So, in closing, I request your approval on this letter of support.
Say move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Buzzio. Now, we're open for questions.
So, yes, sir. Is there a match?
There is absolutely no match on this grant.
I still make that motion.
Was that your question, Beth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of supporting this letter, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number three is funds request for the 75th Independence Day Celebration. And I believe Pleasant is going to do that. I understand that town manager, Woody Jarvis, is also in a meeting tonight.
He is in another meeting. He sent his apologies. My name is Pleasant Sanders, and I am with the town of Bellhaven. We are requesting $5,000 for fireworks to supplement the town's $10,000 allocated show. It is our 75th celebration, and we are doing a four-day celebration, so we're expecting a big crowd, and we would just like to have a display for everyone to see, to welcome them to all the new things that we're doing in Bellhaven.
All right, any questions?
What did we give the other? We've given every other city, so I don't think we should give them five. I think we should give them...
The only problem is, is our tourism budget was 15, and we've given three towns. So, I guess the question is, do we have, will this require amendment, or do you guys have a contingency?
We've used all the contingency. We used that last month to buy an animal control vehicle. I can look within other departments in the budget to see if I can find the $5,000, and I feel like I can do that.
I think we've given the other three communities or towns $5,000 apiece.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I move that we give Bellhaven $5,000 for the Independence Day Celebration.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Richardson, the second by Commissioner Booth. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Are we invited?
Yes, you are. I'd also like to invite you to our complimentary breakfast. That will be happening on the 4th at 10:00 a.m. I do have the invitations here, if I can leave it with the clerk. All of you invited.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got mine in the mail.
Okay, we're down to item number four, the position reclassification at DSS.
The Department of Social Services is requesting to downgrade an income maintenance case worker, income maintenance supervisor one to an income maintenance caseworker two, and this is in the childcare program. And we're requesting this downgrade, and I know you heard last, a couple of weeks ago, that the childcare program, the reimbursements for that program will be done through the NCFAST system, no longer through the old state legacy system. So, we won't need a supervisor in that position. We're also requesting to upgrade an administrative assistant one to a paralegal one, and that administrative assistant currently serves the services unit of our agency and provides support to our agency attorney. And just due to the increase in foster kids, or foster children we've seen come into care over the last several months, our agency attorney is needing some assistance in drafting legal documents. So, this would be a cost-neutral downgrade and upgrade. It wouldn't require any additional funds from the county.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those, sorry, any discussions, questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. Unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item is the adjusted EMS district boundaries, and I guess you're up, Doug.
Chairman, commissioners, over the last several months, myself, as well as the other EMS agencies in the county, along with a lot of help from the sheriff's office and Vic Williams, the head of communications, we've come up with restructure the EMS response district boundaries that go along with the polygonal requirement that will assist with tax, as well as how we're dispatched and how our resources are allocated throughout the county. These maps have been presented to each organization. We basically moved the manner lines, and according to what was agreed between all the agencies, I've got agreement with all the agencies but one, but that is Pamlico Beach and our district did not change. It did not have a significant impact. So, we basically got all the agencies to agree to the boundaries that we basically set, and we did discuss it initially in the EMS Oversight Committee meeting, got initial approval through the Oversight Committee to be presented before the commissioners. And all we need is your approval for those district maps, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
I understand that district didn't change, but was there, did anybody confront them about the signing on the petition?
I sent an email, also placed phone calls, never got anything returned. The only thing I did get back was one of the secretaries with it. They said there was no significant change in the district, there was no flack or negative comments made about it, so.
I just wanted to make sure they were notified.
Yes, sir. They were notified by email, and I also did talk to some of their members.
Two weeks down the road, I don't know what they were coming here talking about, but there wasn't notified. I just wanted to put it on the record.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner.
And I can confirm that that was discussed at the EMS Oversight Committee, and we've recommended to the board, to our board, that it be approved.
If no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Say move.
Motion by Commissioner Buzzio. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to, let's see, four petitions to name a road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I've got four petitions coming for you tonight, four applications. The first site submitted by Larry Bag of Evergreen Horizons Incorporated, is a developer, owner of a subdivision called Cypress Shores in Pamlico, to name three existing unpaved private roads to be accessed off Cypress Shores Road in Longacre Township off of River Road. I've listed the most appropriate choices for you there in red, and these represent no conflicts with redundancy and sandalics, which is what we're trying to move forward with as our policy.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Well, the, I don't have a problem with this, other than Light Wendy Sales Court. When you get into four words to name a street, there's just something about that. We really need to keep these to three words for EMS purposes, communication purposes, because I can see somebody slobbering out on one side of the car, and nobody knows what you're talking about. I would suggest that we change this to Wendy Sales Court, or whatever else they want.
Or Wendy Sales.
Well, it should have a street, or a name, or a way designation, but I think when you get into four words, you're asking for trouble.
I'd agree. It's wordy. As you said, right now, we don't have any language and ordinance to limit the number of words. We could certainly look at that, and I could find a...
Do we have ordinance on street naming?
Yes, sir. The addressing ordinance is part of the B-911 ordinance.
I would like a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
That's the only objection I have. I move we accept these, but that we require that Wendy, Light Wendy Sales Court be three words instead of four.
Sir? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Now, any other comment or discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Your next one, Seth?
Okay. The next one was submitted by Ms. Gail Griffin, the name of existing unpaved road. This is located off of Ross Road and River Road, and also in Longacre Township. If you look at your map, this is right at the intersection with Broad Creek Road.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to be picky again, and ask a couple of questions. How many dwellings does this road serve at the end of it?
This one serves at least five.
There's one, two...
The requirement is a minimum of three.
There's four lots on it. One of those lots is, I believe, a storage center. The next question is, does this serve the property at the end of Breeze Way?
I think that's not the golf course, or there's a large section, there's a large property back there. I don't think we have an address back there. I think you've just got sort of some vacant wooded area.
I don't think there's a golf course back there.
No, I was thinking about different, something further down River Road. If you look at your map back behind it, it's undeveloped.
Yeah. The next question that I have is, is this a dedicated right-of-way, either private or public?
It appears so on our GIS, yes, sir. It's not something that's ever taken over by the state. These are private roads, which is why we're, we go through this...
Who is petitioning for this?
This is one of the residents, Ms. Griffin.
Does she live in the back, back there? See, where I'm going with this is, Beaufort County has named every pig path you can name that's out there, you know, and we...
The residents that live on Ross Road don't have an...
They live on Ross Road, but they don't have an address. Seems to me like they've got an address.
I think they have found with mail delivery services finding them off of an unnamed path that leads to Ross Road.
What you're saying is, there's not a named path that gets you back to Ross Road?
That is the concern of those residents, yes, sir.
Well, again, I'm probably going to go along with this, but I think that one of the things you should be doing when people come in and want things named, is, is this a dedicated private or public right-of-way? And if it's not, then it's a driveway to somebody's house. And when I drive around Crown de County, right now, there are more signs of that go to one and two houses than there are on the corners of major roads.
In the view of the maps, sir, it's the primary access for both of those lots on Ross Road. I think the effort here is to make things more clear on how to access folks' homes back there versus an arbitrary desire for a road sign.
Seth, Commissioner Booth.
Seth, I'm not going to be like Mr. Richardson, that say without a name, they have a pig path. But my question is, is this something that would help EMS people locating folks in case there's a call for it?
That is the feeling of the property owners back there.
And then you also stated that even now to the mailman having a problem finding his pig path.
Yes, sir.
So, when we put this...
One of the results too is a grouping of mailboxes for Ross Road address.
So, when we do this, it'll also, it'll help Vic and his people when they start to sending in, whoever makes the call to send the EMS vehicle to this resident, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Which is the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to...
Say move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of the name, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Those for you.
Okay. All right, your next one?
The next one is part of the Southern Point Campgrounds, former Dan Bradley, known, it seems to be known commonly as the Dan Bradley Campground. This particular road will be located off of Fisherman's Pier Drive within the campground. The proposed road name of Beacon Hill Drive is not taken, or it doesn't sound like anything else in the county, so we recommended that one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, the, is there a set-out right-of-way within this camper park for this road, street, or whatever it is?
It's the accepted plan for that campground.
It's on the plans for the campground.
This, I think, as you may know, some of these older campgrounds, who knows when they were originally platted, but this is one of the roads that they have used for some period of time, where they have septic systems in place, and they want to put three or four campers on there.
And it is set out on the plan that they submitted for a camper park.
I don't know about that, Commissioner.
Well, I don't think we should prove it till we do about that, because we've got a camper park.
Somebody's been here for...
We've got a camper park ordinance, and we're not enforcing the camper park ordinance if we're naming streets.
Well, if it predates several decades, which some of these do.
Yeah, but I'm somewhat familiar with the history on this campground, and it is a rocky road. I don't think we should approve this until we know whether this has been properly submitted within the camper park ordinance.
Seth, would you come back at our next meeting?
Sure.
With that?
Sure.
You want to move to item number nine?
So, this is another one that is, is part of a recently platted campground known as Bear Tracks Retreat, and they've chosen three names, and the Critters Retreat Drive is the most appropriate of their three choices.
And this is platted as a campground?
Yes, sir.
And been permitted?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. And how wide was the right-of-way they set out in there?
It was in compliance with the ordinance, whatever that was. I haven't, I'm not sure exactly how wide it is.
Yes, Commissioner.
Seth, have you checked on this name, Bear Track Lane, to see if we have another Bear Track Lane? I believe that I have bought the Bear Track Lane in Beaufort County.
We've got Bear Grass Road, and you've got Bear Creek Road also in that township, and that's why I'm recommending not going with Bear Tracks.
It could be one that I saw. But would you, would you mind just double-check?
So, what was the question? To double-check what?
See if there's another road in Beaufort County named Bear Track Lane. Seems like I believe it is.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I did search our GIS, and nothing, Bear Tracks came up.
Your recommendation is Critters Retreat Drive, right?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Since proposed Bear Track Lane, that's why I thought it was, that's what you're proposing.
I'm sorry, yeah, I made the maps to be in reference to what they had requested, but my recommendation to you would be Critters Retreat Drive.
Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson.
The, just looking at the arrow photograph here with these lots, there's as few as one unit of a lot, and as many as an undetermined, indeterminate number on an... one unit on a lot, and as many as an indeterminate number on an individual lot. Were these permitted for individual camper trailers, or were they, is there something else going on here?
It was permitted at the campground, through our adopted ordinance.
Yeah, but a campground has individual locations for campers.
But not individually recorded lots.
Do I?
But not individually recorded lots, that spaces.
That's right. But this shows individual lots, and on those individual lots, I mean, it doesn't look like a camper park to me. Keep in mind, I've done several.
Sure.
Because we've got anywhere from one unit on a lot to...
My map doesn't show, doesn't show individual lots.
Have you been down there and inspected this yourself?
I have been on site, yes, sir.
I'd like to defer on this until I can go down there myself and see what's going on.
Are we looking at the, make sure I'm looking at the right one? Is it the one that's pink, or is it the one that's blue?
The proposed is blue.
The one that's blue is one parcel, according to this man.
Right, this is generally the case with...
How many campers do you have on that, on that lane?
I think right now, there's four or five on there. You know, they're supposed to move every six months, so may or may not be one as their, this is a travel trailer park versus a mobile home park. And again, the intent of the rule that was adopted by the commission, to have the ability to name roads, is to give people a reference point if they need help. So, we have this adopted park that was approved by the planning board with residents that are asking for a road name. So, it's up to the commission, but that's why we move forward with these applications.
Yeah, just looking at this, with the information that's on here, and I realize that the tax map is not to be relied upon, but I just have a lot of questions about what's going on in the whole subdivision. And I want to get into one of these things, this Curlicue Road running through here, where fire and EMS can't get in and out.
We don't require people to pave roads in the county.
That's right. But I mean, just looking at the layout of the road, it's a curlicue.
Okay, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to, got a motion by Commissioner...
What are we moving to do? Because I was...
Name it.
I don't think you should do this, because I'm going to be back to you with a report, and it doesn't look good. But do whatever you want to do.
Well, based on this, it's one parcel of land that we're dealing with.
No, Mr. Chairman, you don't understand the intent of the mobile home park ordinance. It is that this being allotted out into individual lots, each one of those lots would have an address, there are minimum standards for the width of the roads, there are fire truck issues, other issues, and there are reviews to be involved, and this doesn't look like it's had any of that.
Did you say this is a campsite?
Campground, travel trailer, it's part of the travel trailer park ordinance.
We have an ordinance for that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. We'll be glad to take a look at it and bring it back to you. All right, that's fine. Thank you very much. You're on for one more.
We have a motion on the floor.
Pardon?
We have a motion.
Do we have a motion?
We have.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? Five, two. All right, you want to go with your next, on the coastal management request?
Sure. The commissioners, as well as some of the county staff, received a letter from Mr. Greg Rudolph, Chair of the Coastal Resources Advisory Council, the CRAC, in April. You've got a copy of that letter in your packet. In his letter, Mr. Rudolph requested local governments, specifically from Interbanks and Coastal Plain area, to list our community's top two or more coastal issues that fall into the Division of Coastal Management jurisdiction, and to make nominations for, to fill. There's four currently vacant seats on the CRAC. The background, as they explain, is that the CRAC works with the Governor and General Assembly-appointed Coastal Resource Commission to balance and foster the protection and wise development of the state's coastal resources through both planning and regulation. The CRAC membership requirements recently changed from forty-five members from specific locations to twenty, generally described as at-large. In an effort to bring balance to the CRAC, with four seats currently vacant, they're reaching out specifically to Interbanks' local governments. The deadline being June fourteenth, I hadn't seen that the commission had made any kind of a response to this. It's an opportunity to, for Bothell County to have some input into basically camera regulations in our area. So, if it's the commission's pleasure, I listed four options at this starting point for things that the county, things that are valuable. Permitting processes for residential and commercial development along the water, easing permitting for maintenance, which would be dredging and mechanized debris removal from existing drainage ways for hazard mitigation in low-lying areas, which we see in the hurricane. These drainage ways are all clogged up, and the permitting is almost impossible to dredge some of these out. I think that could be valuable for Bothell County. Something I've heard from the public in the past, protection of our valuable farmland from wetland mitigation banking, larger companies that maybe aren't necessarily nearby, are able to block off some of our land evidently for wetland banking. Also, potential for the state to increase funding programs for public water access. And if the board wanted to make a nomination, I would certainly volunteer to be nominated for one of those seats.
Do it.
I was thinking, it's a potential for representation from Bothell County on a board that has an impact on comprehensive regulation that affects our waterfront.
You've heard Seth's recommendation, and if you want to review it, it's on page two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, under the four items for the wish list. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the wish list and the nomination of Seth, raise your right hand. When you guys lean, it's hard for me to see. Everybody unanimous, I believe. Thank you, Seth.
Good work.
All right, we're down to item number eleven, solid waste fees. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. During the budget workshops, there was some discussion about the uniform application of solid waste fees. Currently, the Assessor's Office has been releasing some solid waste fees for tax-exempt properties based on an interpretation of a board action that occurred several years ago. As you are aware, solid waste is a utility, not unlike water, sewer, gas, or electric services. It is not a tax, it is a fee, it is a utility fee. With revenue being generated by the solid waste fee is used for the operation of solid waste convenience sites, and to pay for the disposal of solid waste throughout the county. The reason we bring this action back to you is, while we were having those discussions during the budget process, it was actually requested that we bring this back for clarification, so we're bringing that back. So, the language that I would recommend to you in this, is that all unimproved structures in the county are charged a solid waste fee, all improved. So, it is not applicable to vacant land. So, this fee does not apply to vacant land. This fee is also not applied to businesses, industries, or properties that contract with a private solid waste hauler, when that provider pays the full cost of collection and disposal. So, if I'm contracting with someone, they're picking it up, they're paying for all that, and they're paying the tipping fee, then you would waive that for that property. But that's the only properties you would waive it for. Typically, businesses are set up that way, you know, they have the big dumpsters, and a fork truck comes in and picks them up. Well, they're paying the entire ride. Anybody who, and that's, it's a little bit confusing for folks in the county sometimes, because they say, well, I live in the city of Washington, and I pay to have my trash picked up. And that's exactly right. You do pay to have your trash picked up, but you're not paying to have it disposed of through your bill to the city. The solid waste fee is paying for the disposal of that. The county pays for all disposal of waste throughout the entire county. It goes to the transfer station, tipping fee comes off of it, and you pay for that. And it's funded out of this fee. So, unless an individual, or a business, or an entity has a contract with a recognized hauler, and that hauler is not only picking it up and charging you for it, but they're also paying the tipping fee and charging you for it, then you're covering your entire amount. Otherwise, the county's paying for it, and if we're not charging you for it, then we're out, we're lost.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Paying tipping fee, for instance, a private hauler can't go through our transfer station.
I think they can, but they have to pay the tipping fee. Is Christina here?
We scale them, and they pay it.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. While she's coming up, let me, do we require some kind of a paper or a copy of the contract?
We would. Bobby's office would require that that be, that we know that. There's got to be some proof that says, yes, I have a, I have a contract, yes.
Just a clarification, it is not our transfer station. The transfer station is owned and operated by Republic Services, so they own that, so they take trash from multiple people. We are a customer of Republic Services at that transfer station.
Got you.
Let me ask Christina a question.
Yes.
Christina, if a homeowner takes their trash to the transfer station, would they still have to pay a tipping fee, a disposal fee?
Yes, I do that.
It depends on the type of trash. They do not accept residential trash, residential or...
They don't have residential pickup. They take all their trash.
He's talking about to the roll-off.
You're talking about a convenience site, not the transfer station. The transfer station is where all the big trucks go.
No, I'm talking about convenience sites.
Convenience sites, there's no charge at the convenience sites.
No, I know that, but do they still have to, kind of have to pay the...
They're paying it.
Yes, that is what, that's what the county is paying for, the operation of those convenience sites, and the hauling to the transfer station, and then the tipping of it.
I have another question. For all these people that have been exempt all these years, will they get a letter first before we start collecting from, or ask, I collected, but they're asking, or advising them that if less they provide proof, they're going to have to start, we're going to start charging?
I think that's part of this board action, and, no, we will not be sending them a letter, but they will be charged, and it's my understanding, and Bobby's, Bobby said there he is, that we have been charging them, and they have been coming in, and we have been waiving it, or we have been releasing it, excuse me, releasing it. So, they're used to seeing it, and then they'll come in and say, this needs to be released because I'm a nonprofit.
Okay.
And the response back to that is, it's a utility, it's not a tax.
And I understand that, but if they show, they'll have to show proof then, at the point, is they have a collection service, and they're paying the total cost.
They would be required to show some proof that they're paying the full ride to be exempt from that.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I got a question for Christina. Based on my understanding, there's only two sites in Bothell County that accepts TVs, radios, microwaves, and things like that. One at Magnolia School Road, and the other one's out by Blunt's Creek, out that way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Why is there only two? This is a big county.
Historically, there have been two, and in the past few years, based upon funds available, there have not been funds to have that at a second site. Even though it is recycling, we have to pay for that, because there are certain components that are not allowed in the landfill. So, we actually contract with a separate company to come in and to pick up those TVs. That's why they are isolated from the other municipal solid waste. And so, there's a cost incurred with that, and it's just an area that we have not expanded upon due to availability of funds.
When we get off the table, I want to sit down and talk to you about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
While Christina's up there, does anyone else have a question? Any other questions of staff? If not, can I have a motion to...
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Evans, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Votes unanimous. Okay, we're down to item number twelve, the budget amendment request and solid waste landfill capital project fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd appreciate Christina, if she'll just stay right there at the podium, because this relates directly to the very next agenda item, which is Christina's item. They tie in together. Back on April nineteenth, the Solid Waste Division of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality conducted a facility inspection at the Hawkins Beach Road landfill site, and they noted several violations and deficiencies there that need to be corrected. So, as I mentioned, there's really two pieces to this item. There's a budgetary piece, and then Christina's piece is the contract piece. But first of all, what we need for you to do, is we need for you to authorize the budget amendment on page two-seventy-three, which appropriates fund balance out of the general fund, and transfers that as a temporary loan to the solid waste fund. And then, in turn, the solid waste fund will transfer that money to a capital project fund, which is established on page two-seventy-four, so that we can secure the services of an engineering firm to begin the process of completing the deficiencies that were identified in the inspection.
And I can give you history on that, if you want additional information.
And it is also our anticipation that this will be a temporary loan, that it will be paid back by the solid waste fund to the general fund, so this is a temporary measure to get us through.
It's also a temporary solution to this problem, because in a few years, you're going to be right back doing this again.
Well, and I hope then, is that we will have the solid waste fund stabilized, so that it will have a continuing maintenance piece.
But the point is, the problem's going to be there. You can't engineer it away, it's going to keep coming back.
Well, the other part of this is, if you'll recall, this solid waste fund was established as of July one, 2016, as an enterprise fund. So, when you do that, it starts with a zero fund balance, so we've not had any opportunity to go through a full year of operations to accumulate some fund balance to pay for an item like this. So, that's why we need this temporary loan.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the budget amendment, raise your right hand. Unanimous, okay.
That's a loan.
Did I say that wrong?
I thought you said Langley, it was Evans.
Pardon?
You said Langley, it was Evans.
Oh, okay.
Jury board, Ron.
Okay, we're down to number thirteen, and that's you, Christina.
To continue with what Anita was speaking of, now that the funds are appropriated, I'm asking for a recommendation to award engineering services to C.D.M. Smith. As Anita said, we did have an inspector with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the Solid Waste Management Section, who did an inspection of our landfill, which is an annual occurrence, so there was nothing extra about that. But during this particular visit, he did cite numerous violations. After receiving the report from the inspector, I gave Mr. Ray Williams a call, spoke with him extensively regarding the issues that we have, and any recommended fixes that he would have at that time. During that conversation, I did ask him if he felt that the quantity of deficiencies, if it was something that we could just fix on our own with a contractor and go in and do that, or if it was something that we needed to have a little bit more professional engineering help with, with someone who specialized in solid waste, and that was his recommendation. So, based upon that, I've reached out to a couple of engineering firms. C.D.M. Smith, which they have an office in Raleigh, was very responsive. They were, came down within just a few days in order to do a site inspection to see how they could assist us with the matter. They are the engineering firm of the landfill in Onslow County. Spoke with the manager of the Onslow County landfill, and he gave them a high recommendation. He said that they were extremely responsive, extremely knowledgeable of the requirements that the state puts on the landfills, and so he, again, gave them a high recommendation. So, included in your agenda packet is the proposal from C.D.M. Smith, and I ask that you award this technical... And I ask that you award this technical services agreement in the amount of $12,625. They will help us address the current deficiencies that we have, and I would like to start a type of relationship with them, so perhaps as Commissioner Richardson spoke of, that we can kind of get ahead of the curve, and look at more of a preventative maintenance type contract, or more frequent inspections by CDM Smith to assist us.
Questions of Christina?
I have no change orders, really.
Commissioner Booth, I cannot promise that.
That's what I asked. I mean, you promised me.
And one day, I may slip up and say yes, and then you're going to hold my feet to the fire.
I'm going to hold my feet to the fire, but you'll come back with some other money anyway.
But this is, this is a professional services, technical services agreement, so there are certain tasks that we are, based upon the inspection report that we've received, and based upon information or conversations with the inspector, we believe that these tasks will, will bring us into compliance. If, when we go in and start doing repairs, and we start doing excavation, and we start going in and making repairs on the landfill cap, if we run into something unexpected, I cannot promise that I will not come back.
My question was, if he's going to just tell you where to take to fix it, there shouldn't be any, any change orders. You walk in and tell you where to take to fix it.
Well, that, that's if it's correct, but again, once you take, once you take an excavator, it may take additional measures to fix it.
You may lose the excavator while you're doing the job.
I sincerely hope that that is not the case, but again.
I have one question to ahead. Looking at the photographs of some of the deficiencies, it looks like people have been driving over the cap. Is this site secured so that hundreds and all those people can't get in there?
No, sir.
It needs to be.
There's not fencing around the entire site.
We need to take a look at securing that.
No, sir.
Long-term capital.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to look at it.
It's, I mean, there, measures have been taken, but I wouldn't, it is not a secure site.
Okay. Commissioner Busio.
Yeah, Christina, maybe you can help me on this. I was living in the trash business. How did this come about? Was there a contractor managing it for the county?
How did what come about? It's an annual inspection, that means?
No, 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 no. It's, it's a closed landfill now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When it was an open landfill, who was managing it? Was the county managing it, or was it a contractor?
When it was a county landfill, the county was managing it, or when it was an open landfill, but it's been closed for many years.
All right, so when it was open, we were managing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't remember. Have we had a motion or not?
Sub move.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, then, I guess Anita, you follow this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you think back to the July 1, 2016 budget, the original 1617 water budget included a $600,000 appropriation among the seven districts for beginning to install emergency generators. So what this action does is it simply takes it out of the water fund budget and places it into a multi-year capital project fund, so we can begin that project.
Any questions of Anita?
I have a couple. I'm not a neither.
Okay. Go ahead. Hold on, I'm sorry. Christine.
Christine. Christine, on the generators in here, we have a line item, says we're determined that two steel platforms will be deleted from the scope of work.
Yes, sir.
The steel platforms, we're going to hold the generators?
No, sir, they would surround the generators.
Excuse me. You've actually moved to an additional agenda item. You're on us, you're on her agenda item. Can we hold that until we get to her agenda item?
Well, that's.
We're simply, this one's the financial piece. We've got to do the financial pieces then, just like the other.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
That's fine. I'll come back to it.
Is, any other questions on the financial piece of this? If, if not, can I have a motion to?
Sub move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Evans?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the capital project fund for the generators, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now we're down to the, I guess, the technical aspect.
Now I can ask my question.
Well, do you want, you want to start with some introductory?
You summarize, I'll be happy.
Okay. She may answer your question.
So she may. No, I got it, I got a couple of questions.
On March 6th of 2007, McDavid and Associates on behalf of Beaufort County issued a RFP to firms to provide standby power improvements for facilities located on the south side of the river. Again, as a refresher, as Anita said, this was year one of a three-year plan to provide generators to the facilities within the water department, and the face, or the year one included providing that on the south side of the river. And we provide, we contracted with McDavid Associates to do the design and to assist with procurement and construction administration of the project. The scope of the work of the contract included providing generators, automatic transfer switches, and all associated equipment to serve the south side water treatment plant, one well site, and one booster pump station. Two bids were received on May 1, 2017. Pitt Electric ORI LLC of Greendale, North Carolina provided the lowest bid. The base bid items were selected with a total bid amount of $435,800. However, due to the selected vendor and the actual size of the generators to be provided, it was determined that two steel platforms could be deleted from the scope of work. This resulted in a credit of $14,000. Therefore, the recommended award amount is $421,800. And again, funding for this project was included in the original fiscal year 2017 budget.
All right.
Yeah. Okay.
You can ask.
Explain to me about the steel platform.
Absolutely. When McDavid and Associates did the design of the work, they, they prepare an overall, a general design, because you have a generator for each location. Each generator is a different size based upon the electrical requirements of that particular facility. With generators, the size of the generator, the physical size of the generator, the dimensions, is determined by the overall capacity size of the generator. So if you have a 100 KW generator versus a 35 KW generator, there's a difference in size of those two physical structures. So therefore, when McDavid and Associates did the design, they did it based on a general design, because a Kohler generator may be a different size than a Generac generator, which may be a different size than a Olean generator, similar to a Ford car is a little different dimension than a Chevrolet car, that type of thing. So they did a general design. McDavid and Associates, in order to provide us the best product possible, and in order to get the best pricing possible, they provided a steel platform at all three of the generator locations. Steel platforms would, per any C code or the National Electric Code, certain components of a generator have to be with a certain height from the ground, so that the people working on it are not at risk, not reaching too far, not reaching, you know, too far away if there's an issue. So they, in the initial design and included in the base bid, were platforms for all three locations. However, when Pitt Electric provided their bid, the particular generator that they, that was included in their bid price was of a smaller footprint, and actually shorter than some of the other generators. So when we were going through the contract review and the bid review, and looking at the dimensions of the generator, we determined that there was a cost savings there, that having an actual platform at two of the sites would not be a benefit to the county, that it would actually be something additional that we would have to maintain, something that would be more difficult to weed eat around if there was actually a problem with the generator, that it may be more difficult for a repair person to access inside of the generator due to the platform, because these generators have doors on both sides. So based upon the recommendation of the contractor, the recommendation of the engineer, and the information that we were given, we just felt that it was not to the benefit of the county to pay an additional $14,000 for two platforms.
So what you're basically saying, it's not going to have an impact on the project?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay. Would both companies that were bidding have an opportunity to rebid, or whatever it was? Was this the other company that bid, where the deletion of steel platforms?
No, sir.
Okay. My next question is, is will McDavid and Associates monitor this project?
Yes, sir.
They will. And if the contractor, the subcontractor then, does not meet their obligations, will they be assessed a penalty in the contract?
Yes, sir.
And will McDavid and Associates also be under a penalty if their subcontractor does not meet their obligations?
There is not a penalty in the professional services agreement.
All right, so if the subcontractor doesn't meet their obligation in the contract, this is what happened last time when David was involved in something. The subcontractor failed, we assessed the penalty against them. McDavid Associates come back and said, well, we have to stay on the project, therefore we took $150,000 penalty and paid McDavid Associates that $150,000, which I call new economics. Is the same thing going to happen here?
I sincerely hope not.
Well, that's not what I'm asking, to hope not. I want to prevent it from happening.
Again, well, Commissioner Busio, I'm not, I can't predict the future. I can tell you that we will work closely to manage it.
Mr. Chairman.
Engineers are not.
I have a right to ask to speak, sir. I, I'm going to recognize you.
Can I?
Let him finish.
Okay. So that's where I'm coming from.
I understand. I understand your concerns. I've voiced them before, and I believe Dan Lewis with McDavid Associates has addressed it, has spoken with you about it.
Well, can you assure me that if the subcontractor does meet their obligation, we're not going to end up paying McDavid Associates extra money?
I cannot assure that, because I'm not sure it, how the, for what reasons the contractor may not meet their obligations. If the contractor does not meet their obligations for, if the company fails, if they file bankruptcy, if something along that happens, then I don't believe that the engineer can be held.
I'm not trying to give you all the time, Christine, I'm not. You know that. You know who I'm upset with.
I understand.
And he stood here at the last, one of the meetings, McDavid and Associates, and told us that the subcontractor didn't have enough resources on the original project, but we ended up paying McDavid and Associates. And that's, that's where I'm going with this decision. My next question is, and I'm not trying to put you in a difficult position.
I understand. I just, I can't give you the answer that you want.
Does McDavid Associates getting a percentage at $421,000?
Yes, sir.
What is that percentage?
Eight percent.
He's getting eight percent to make sure the project's done on time and done correctly.
Yes, sir. That was in a, that was presented a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Eight percent of the construction cost, so the deletion of the platforms actually reduces the fee paid to McDavid Associates.
Thank you, Christina. And you know where I'm going with this.
I do, yes, sir. But again, I apologize, and I can't give you the answer that you want.
I'm going to have to call time, boy. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, here's what's going on, Commissioner Busio. You do not want your engineer to leave you in the middle of the job. That gets to be very expensive. That's why there are not usually penalties against the engineer or the architect, unless it's a really huge job. Then you can get into certain penalties and things. For instance, you do not always, speaking as an engineer who does these things, you do not always know where some of this stuff is going to go. There are all kinds of unanticipated things that happen. Union strikes, you can't run the job. The people deliver the wrong materials. You have to order the contractor to tear out part of what he's done and redo it, redo it because he didn't understand the plans. The best friend that you have on an engineering job is your engineer, and you don't want to start beating up on him, because when you do, you can get ready to really start spending some money. Because if he walks from that job, now you have to go hire another engineer, you have to re-commission him. So I, I can defend the firm on what they did on the last project. There were some things happened that shouldn't have happened. They were on top of it. They did what your engineer is supposed to do. They figured out how to stay within the budget.
Within the roof.
Within the budget and get everybody paid. They did a great job.
Yeah. The cost is $150,000.
It did not.
They made on this county, pardon me, somewhere's over $20,000.
It did not. You don't know what you're talking about.
All right, gentlemen, is there anyone else that has a comment? Commissioner Evans?
Simple question. Since we're deleting the steel platforms, are we sure all of those generators and switch gears, and all that's going to be above the base flood elevation?
Yes, sir.
So we're good to go on that? Because that's part of it, is the flooding.
Yes, sir, that was part of the design, and it's also, all of these require an electrical permit, so the contractor has to file for the permit through our building inspection office.
Any other commissioners? Okay, I'm sorry, Brian?
Just one quick comment, to help, hopefully, to ease some concerns. In the prior project, you had a contractor and subs who were working for that contractor. The engineer's separate from the contractor. In this arrangement, same way, the engineer's separate from the contractor, but Pitt Electric, that is what, that is all they do. That is what they do. Actually, TA Loving is, is not necessarily an electrical contractor. They would sub that work out. Pitt Electric will be doing, as far as I know, all of the work. So they will have a tighter control of that job, and they'll be 100% responsible for making sure it's right.
It's close to 8%.
Well, that's pretty standard. In fact, you'll see, you'll see later in our agenda, we've got.
I had to stand up for you, but I know where I was going.
Yes, sir.
Well, there's quite a bit of difference between the two, two contract prices.
Yes, sir, and we had that discussion. Andrew Parker's here, he had more discussion with the actual bidders, but we were aware of that. And there was actually a third bidder who, due to, he wasn't quite able to submit his bid, but in discussions that we had with him, he was very close to the price of Pitt Electric, so it gave credence to that price that, and Pitt Electric is very comfortable that they have the funds that they need in this, or else they would not have been as willing to give us the credits for the platforms.
If there's no other comment, I'm going to let Commissioner Brennan make this motion, because this is why we got into this.
Sub move.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
I'm holding those.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you very much. We're down to item number 16, the bid and offer to purchase property. David?
Mr. Paul Wardle made an offer, has made an offer to the county of $1,850 to purchase a tract of land of approximately three acres. He's made a 5% deposit, which is $92.90. And of course, that puts the property back on tax rolls. And it is presented to you, whether you accept it or not. If you accept it, then I run an ad, or the clerk actually runs the ad, in the Daily News, one time for any upset bids, and if none, then we're closed.
Okay, you've, you've heard the, the offer by the candidate's attorney. Any questions?
My only thing is, is I just asked Commissioner Richardson about it, is $1,800 for that piece, piece of land seems awfully cheap, but he says it's landlocked. Do you have any proof of that?
It, it, it's sort of tears that way. No, I don't know, I've not been to it.
I can't prove it, but it.
I'm looking at it, I mean, there's land all around.
It has no road frontage.
I don't know whether he owns the, any of that property up on Reddick Road, I can't tell.
We wouldn't guarantee access anyway on the site.
No, no.
So we don't, we really don't care, other than that it appears as though it's be landlocked. Okay. Any, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move forward, or I guess approve the offer.
Yeah.
Subject to any?
Subject advertised.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you make, Commissioner Langley?
No, I thought you read the vote.
Yeah. We've got to have a motion first.
I move, sub move.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson, you want to do this now?
I'll say it.
All right, Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, we're down to the Beaufort County Community College Board of Trustees appointment, and Katie?
Mr. Willard's four-year term is going to expire at the end of this, this month. He's eligible for reappointment if the board, if you choose to do so. I've also included another person who is interested in surveying acquisition. Whoever you choose to pick or appoint this evening.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I'd like to just say a couple of words on Ashley's behalf, he's not here, but I talked with him about, about this, and he's enjoyed his term with the Community College a great deal. He's got three young children that he spends awful lot of time with, and he said this is the reason he is giving up that position, so he can spend more time with his children, and I'm thankful enough for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Langley?
I would nominate Dolores Lee for that position.
You've heard the nomination?
Dolores Lee.
Dolores Lee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor of the appointment, raise your right hand. Okay. There's a page. I can't see. I can't see. They're opposed.
What'd you say?
No, I was...
Oh, you were for it.
So, it was unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, we're down to item number 18, the Voting Delegate for the 2017 Annual NACO Conference. Katie?
This is the voting delegate for the conference coming up in July that is being held in Ohio. They asked if you appoint a voting delegate and an alternate. We have three that are going at this point, and Chief, the next one.
Okay, and the commissioners that are attending at this point are Booth, Langley, and Brennan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The voting delegates I would nominate are Vice Chairman Jerry Langley and Commissioner Brennan.
Okay, we've got a motion for Commissioner Langley to serve as our delegate and Commissioner Brennan to serve as our alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of these two representing us at the National Association of County Commissioners, raise your right hand. Unanimous, thank you. All right, we're down to item number 19, the Declaration of the Official Intent to Reimburse. That's you, Anita.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could step in on this one. The reason we put it late in the agenda was we were anticipating you may take some action on the budget. So, if we could, if you intend to take action on the budget tonight, and we won't know that until you get down to number 27, if we could move this below that...
Okay.
Would appreciate that.
That's fine. All right, we'll move to item number 20, the Appointment of the Tax Collector. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the June 2015 meeting, the Board of Commissioners appointed Lynn Kenyon to a two-year term as the tax collector. That term expires June 30 of '17. Per the statute you have attached in your agenda, the commissioners shall appoint a tax collector to serve for a term as determined by the appointing board, and you are the appointing board. So, you have a term that is expiring the end of the fiscal year, June 30, and we request your direction on who you want to appoint, how long you want to appoint them for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Brennan.
I'll make a motion. We reappoint Lynn for a two-year service as tax collector. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, Brian, the Appointment of the Tax Assessor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, similarly, on June 2015, the Board of Commissioners appointed Mr. Bobby Parker to a two-year term for the tax assessor. That too expires on June 30. Per the statute, the commissioners make an appointment to that position for either a two or a four-year term, and that will be effective July 1 of '17. So, we are seeking your recommendation on that.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, yes, Commissioner Buzzio.
I'd like to reappoint Bobby Parker for a two-year term. Make a motion that we appoint him for a two-year term.
We've got a motion for a two-year, second by, I didn't...
Either one.
Commissioner Evans, okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six, one. Okay, we're down to item number 22, the Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Lobbyist Contract, and that's on page 312 of your book. Yes, Commissioner.
Before I make a motion to approve, I'd like to make some recommendations, and I'll put it into a form of a motion after I discuss it. I'd like to recommend that we make some additions to the contract. And we further, we put a requirement in here, there's a statement in here that he'll provide, to communicate on a regular basis and timely manner with the county, chairman of the county board of commissioners, and the manager of the county. And I'd like to put in here that on a monthly basis, he'll supply a detailed written report of who he met, what his activities, his accomplishments, the impact of legislative activities, legislative activities, and impact on the county's proposed legislation or final legislation. The other thing is, I'd like to put in here that when we're paying any expenses, including lodging and food, that there be no charge to the county for alcohol. And also that we further describe what extraordinary expenses are, which is found in paragraph D. Consultant shall receive reimbursement for costs or expenses incurred only for extraordinary And I think there should be a, another, and another thing we should consider is do we limit meal expenses to per diem, like maybe $30 for dinner, $15 for lunch, $10 for breakfast for expenses. So, those, and I'm going to go ahead and put those in a motion, but I think those are some of the things that we should require in this contract. So, what I'm saying here, the motion would say that the consultant would be required to provide on a monthly basis a detailed written report that describes his activities for that month, who he met, what was accomplished, including any legislative activities such as pending legislation and/or final legislation, the impact on the county. That would be Part A. Another thing would be, including the motion, the need to describe, further describe what extraordinary expenses are. Third part of that would be, there'd be no reimbursement for alcohol charges, same as we can't charge for alcohol. And then the other, the fourth part would be per diem, $30 for dinner, not to exceed $30 for dinner, not to exceed $15 for lunch, and not to exceed $10. If he does take anybody to a meal, that he lists the attendees on his receipt to the county. That's my motion.
So, you're making a motion to amend...
amend the contract.
To amend the contract. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, the amendment fails.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract and submit it by the manager.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Booth.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of the motion to approve the contract, raise your right hand.
There is one question I'd like to ask the county manager.
We're in the process of taking a vote right now.
I want to ask, I want to ask this question before I vote.
Before you vote?
Yes.
Okay, we, all right, we're going back up.
All right.
We're going back up. You ask a question, then we'll take another vote.
Okay. Are you aware ever getting meals for alcohol from Joe DePulis?
I'm not aware of that. Thank you. I mean...
Now we vote.
Now we vote, okay. Anybody else have a question before we vote?
Of course.
If you ask for one after we vote, you're not going to get it.
No, he is.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed to the contract.
Did you vote, Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I voted for.
Okay, so it's six, one, is that, okay. All right, we're down to item number 23. That's you, Brian.
This is, as you're aware, we're in the process of doing some design work related to the courthouse and the jails, specifically the jail that started all this, with Mr. Earl Warren Jr., who's architect. He was the architect of Rectord for the expansion of the jail in 1987, and has agreed to assist the county in his proposed scope of work. His fee is 8% of the cost of the work, and the funding for that project is included in the 1718 budget. So, you have his letter of engagement, and we would recommend your approval of that letter of engagement for the design work for both the jail and the courthouse, for his fee of 8% of the cost.
Any questions of, Brian? I'll entertain a motion to approve this letter of engagement.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, we're down to the placement of the ATM in the courthouse. That's you, Brian?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I had been approached by a private vendor to, he submitted a proposal to install ATM in the courthouse. The only thing it would require is an electrical plug-in, and he would service it during normal working hours. He has agreed as part of that proposal to pay the county a per-transaction fee, essentially as rent. I've talked to the clerk of court, and he has no objections to that. Register deeds is in favor of it. What I would suggest to you, I reached out, he actually has contracts with Green County and Pitt County and Martin County. What I would suggest to you, as I've noted in the agenda item, is that you allow us, if you want to do that, and I think it's probably a good thing to put one in the courthouse that way, folks aren't going in and out if they need to get money, let us put out an RFP so that we're reaching out to any other financial institution that may want to say, I'd like to put one in there, and then it becomes a competitive process, and we say, all right, whoever ponies up the most for per-fee transaction, you'll consider a contract with him.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Brian, have you talked to anybody in the courthouse, like hedge path about this?
I've talked to the clerk of court and the register deeds.
And what did they say?
They're both in fine with me. There was an ATM in there about seven or eight years ago.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know why it was taken out.
Typically, it's not a, typically, it's not something that financial institutions
are really interested in doing because they don't get a lot of traffic because it's closed at 5:00, so people don't have access to it after hours. So, a lot of times you'll see private vendors want to put them in.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Buzzio to do the placement of the ATM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we've got a few more that's going to take a little bit of time, and also the budget. I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back in five minutes. All right, we're down to item number 25, the Resolution Opposing Partisan Board of Education Election. Commissioner Buzzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. House Bill 265, currently, there's 17 states that have partisan elections, 17 counties in the state that have partisan elections. House Bill 265, which passed, added six counties to that list, and there's six counties, including Beaufort County, bringing it up to 23. The rest of the counties are nonpartisan elections. Personally, I feel that politics do not belong in the Board of Education or in our school system. Therefore, I'm proposing a resolution which opposes partisan Board of Education elections, and I'll read it quickly. Whereas the tradition in Beaufort County has been to hold nonpartisan elections for seats on the Beaufort County Board of Education, and whereas this nonpartisan tradition has forced a climate of mutual respect and cooperation among all board members who have put partisanship aside and made their number one priority the education of our children, and whereas the tradition of nonpartisan school board elections in Beaufort County has worked very well and should not be altered without a compelling justification, and whereas under House Bill 265, members of the Beaufort County Board of Education, five other North Carolina school boards would be elected on a partisan basis beginning in 2018, and whereas under Senate Bill 94, county boards of education statewide would be elected on a partisan basis beginning in 2018, and whereas introducing partisanship in Beaufort County Board of Elections, Education Elections would adversely affect what has been a successful and collaborative agreement among board members. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners formally expresses his opposition to partisan elections for the Beaufort County Board of Education. Two, directs that state legislators be provided with a copy of this resolution. Three, respectfully requests that the Beaufort County Board of Education be removed from House Bill 265 and Senate Bill 94. And four, respectfully requests that state legislators oppose legislation introducing partisan elections for the Beaufort County Board of Education, adopted this 12th day of June 2017. And this will be in support of our Board of Education, which also is passing, I was about your similar resolution to send to the legislators. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Langley. Floor is now open. Any comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I like when this resolution is sent out, if it passes, to show that it was not unanimous.
Okay, any other...
Well, I have another comment. The main reason that I'm against this is precisely what's said in the last, whereas introducing partisanship in the Beaufort County Board of Education elections could adversely affect what has been a successful and collaborative arrangement among board members. In other words, the good old boy system. This is why you need these elections to be bipartisan, so the public can have a choice. Right now, we have people who get elected to a school board seat, and they own it for just about as long as they ever want to own it. There's nobody that will run against them. Whereas if it's the two-party system, you're at least going to have two opinions, whereas right now, you've got one, which, most of which I don't agree with. Would you be willing to amend this motion to show that it's not a unanimous decision?
Excuse me, I'm not amending the motion.
You're not amending the motion, then I'm directing the clerk to be sure when this motion goes to our elected officials, in my behalf, that you show that this is not a unanimous decision.
Okay, we have a second motion and a second. Any other comments on the resolution? All right, if not, all those in favor of the resolution as red, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed? Votes five to two. All right, we're down to item number 26, a Resolution on the Solar Farm. And we've heard discussion tonight as it relates to the solar farm in Terraceea. I'm going to read the resolution as proposed. A Resolution Concerning the Wilkinson Solar Farm. Wherefore, the county commissioners of Beaufort County are charged with protecting the property rights of its citizens, and whereas the commissioners have always opposed countywide zoning, and whereas on September the night, 2013, the Board of Commissioners approved a solar ordinance concerning fencing, setbacks from property lines, and landscaping buffers, and whereas the commissioners plan to review this ordinance and consider changes within 120 days to address complaints concerning the future location of solar developments, and now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County Commissioners encourage the Wilkinson Solar Development, the Terraceea Christian School, landowners, and citizens to seek compromise wherever appropriate, recognizing the property rights of others, adopted this the 12th day of June 2017. Is there a, I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Buzzio. Discussion? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I go back to my argument that I made earlier, that if you pass this ordinance, the Wilkinson people know exactly where they stand, and you're not helping the Terraceea Christian School. If you want to help the school, you'd not pass this ordinance, or you take out the part that, whereas, talking about the 120-day to address. But I think a stronger statement that could, should be said by this board is, we will not make a move on anything until we are told by both parties that the negotiations between Terraceea School and Wilkinson have broken down. That gives the school a club and a talking point. Whereas if you pass this ordinance tonight, you're cutting off the school, and the Wilkinson people know exactly what their legal rights are, and they can proceed however they want to. If you want to help the school, then we need to say that we want them to negotiate, and we want to hear that negotiations have completely broken down, and then we can take a look at the ordinance, and then we'll know what we should be doing to the ordinance. For instance, we'll know how severely we should address the ordinance. Whereas if you just address it in 120 days, you don't know how severely to address the ordinance.
Are you willing to amend this resolution, or are you opposed to it totally?
No, if you take out the 120-day, that, the whereas with the 120 days in there, I can support it because it's... support it because it does exactly what we want it to do, it gives them, gives them some leverage.
Okay, so we're going to, your amendment would be to take out that one paragraph?
Yes, sir.
Can I just raise one question?
Ah, yes.
The, when I look at that paragraph, I look at it as we're talking about an ordinance which would have no impact on this situation. So, if we make a change on an ordinance, it's after the fact, we'd have no, no-
We don't have, don't have any impact on this one now.
No, that's correct.
Well, what, what, what not change, what taking out this would do is, these people are in the industry. They don't want to go out and do something that would cause us to severely look at the ordinance and possibly hamper future development in the county. Whereas if they can work something out, we would have a tendency to be more lenient in reviewing the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes.
I have some concerns about the ordinance, even though I want to try to, to do everything we possibly can do, but we represent the taxpayers of Beaufort County, and we protect the rights of all people in Beaufort County. That's including the people that own the land that that cell phone is going on. So, I, I just have a problem with that, with that phraseology.
Are you, how about removing the paragraph? 120, oh, okay, you're supporting removing the paragraph? So, who had made, who had made the motion to amend it? Are you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution by taking that one paragraph out. All those in favor of that amendment, raise your right hand. Actually unanimous, okay. Now, I made a motion to approve. Did we get a second on the resolution?
Yes.
You made.
You made, you made a motion.
Can you second?
I second it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the motion, I, I'm pleased that, that this amended here, and I'm grateful that you covered that this is not a county planning. Today is, we're talking about solar farms, and tomorrow, we could be talking about corn or soybeans. You got people, I remember a few years ago, who were done in farm districts. There are people coming up telling us that they end up big tractors that ride up and down the Terraceea Road, and stuff like that. So, I'm grateful that you put in here that this is not a countywide zoning. And I'm commended for doing that, because as long as I'm here, I can't vote for a countywide zoning.
Any other comments or questions? If not, the motion has been made in second to approve this, eliminating that one paragraph as it relates to the 120 days. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Thank you, that was unanimous. Now, we're down to the review of the 2017, 18 budget ordinance, and at this time, I'll ask Brian or Anita if they have any comments.
Y'all can stay and watch the budget process if you'd like. We'll use this amended copy, probably.
192. Come on, 192.
Now, you're in our agenda.
Your agenda book. Your agenda book, page 192.
I didn't bring mine.
Your agenda book.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
About your budget book.
191, 192.
Agenda book, not budget book.
Okay, this is page 191 in the agenda.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'll be glad to go into as much detail or as little detail as you wish. Y'all spent a lot of time in your budget workshops discussing this. What you have on page 192 is the revised manager's budget message that reflects the changes that the board made to the budget that was submitted to you originally. So, if you want me to go through that, I certainly can, but I also don't want to insult your intelligence by reading it to you.
Does anyone want Brian to go through any of the details of? Yeah, I think everyone's had plenty of time to review this, so if you have a question, don't hesitate to ask.
So, these are changes that the board did to the manager's recommended budget, and if the changes, if there aren't changes, if you don't see a change, then whatever was in the recommended budget would continue.
Okay, we, I'm going to lay each commissioner up to five minutes for discussion or comments on the budget, so who would like to be first?
I'll go first.
Okay, Commissioner Brandt.
We've, we've all worked long and hard on this, spent a lot of hours away from home. I feel that Anita and County Manager Brian has done an excellent job as far as putting it together. Services are staying the same. We did add $650,000 to the, to the expanded budget. Those things that we had six commissioners that, that thought it was the thing to do and the way to handle. So, I'm going to highly support this budget tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brandt. Next, who wants to be next?
I'll do, Brian.
All right.
I can't support this budget because we've got, we've gone from a pay-as-you-go budget into a borrowing budget. These things are always bad. It's like financing dinner for 10 years. That's what we're doing. We're taking current expenses, we're going to finance it for 10 years. It's not a good thing to do. It's a great indicator of how far the county has moved in the last three years. We've gone from a $25 million surplus to a $14 million surplus. We've increased spending by about the same amount, and I would grant you, there are very few people in this county who can say that they've actually gotten a benefit out of this increased spending. So, the, the fact that the fund balance is at 14 million, we need about 14 million to run us from the 1st of July until taxes start coming in, so we're really scraping the bottom of the barrel in terms of financial management in Beaufort County. I think the budget, I think the manager did a good job of doing what the commissioners wanted done. So, you can't blame it on the manager. He did what the majority of this board wanted done, so the blame for this rests on the We've increased county payroll by about 70 people over the last four, five, the last three or four years. One indicator of how far we have sunk into socialism is when the board spent more time worrying about charity to their buddies than they did worrying about the operation of departments and the reduction in, in payrolls and making the county efficient. We spent, we spent one-fourth of our time worrying about socialism and who we were going to give money for, supposedly so we could get reelected next time. It's the same thing that goes on in Washington, DC, is now going on in Washington, NC. We're handing out money to people who are going to vote for us, and we're borrowing money for continuing operations. What could possibly go wrong? So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for this for those, all those reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I'm going to be last, so.
You're going to just vote?
You want me to?
Yes.
Um, this is my first budget. I had no idea of the detail that it's required to go in this, in a budget like this. I've double-checked a lot of the numbers. A lot of the numbers make sense to me. I like when you can go back and look at a history, but spending a lot of time going around the county, talking to different people, finding out the needs. The county, I think, has done a wonderful thing in moving on with countywide paramedics and EMS. Everybody seems to be very receptive about that. I think the commissioners are doing a good job, despite what some think. I think we've got an extremely talented bunch of department heads, and we need to give them their support. Again, we're like every county, how much time ago, every county in, really, United States, we're facing a lot of challenges, and again, it's going through a budget like this, it's, it's really quite a challenge. It's nice to know that we got some professionals here, and we're setting some directions. There's just a lot of things I see that I know I've got a year to work, hopefully, I got a year to work on the budget next year. But it's just disconcerting, some of the things we've done, like kicked the can down the street, and you want people to come to this area, and you see the status of some of our public buildings. You ask people to come in and work for us, and you can walk in the courthouse and laugh where you just left, and there's a hole in the bathroom that big, and a wall, and it's been like that for years. So, we've got a long ways to go, but we've got a good group to do it. I'm encouraged about the budget. I don't see a lot of, I don't see any fluff in there. I think if we keep managing Beaufort County the way we've been doing it, listening to the people, we'll be just fine. I think we've got a lot of things going for us in Beaufort County. We're starting to have industry to take a good, hard look at us, so I think for 27, for next year, I think the budget looks fine. I'm done. Thank you.
Well, I won't be last. I think, I think we have a good budget here. I mean, for as Jerry said, for a flood, but I do have a concern. We are borrowing $3 million over the span, paying it back 10 years, supposedly to keep from kicking the can further down the road. But what we're doing, we're hurting ourselves. I feel that, and we got to have some kind of reoccurring money. Growth in this county is not coming as we projected it would. Also, when you sit down and think about it, even Mr. Richardson stated at our last, at our last budget workshop, that people vote for tax increases. That's when you make a tax increase. And I've been saying here, ever since I've been on this board, that the people of Beaufort County voted for a $33 million school bond referendum, and we hadn't raised the taxes yet. That is, that is why we're in the position that we're in today, keep going back in your, in your rainy day funds, and keep going back. Yes, it sounds good. One cent on a, from my, from my perspective, one cent tax increase would give us 600, over $600,000 a year. One cent on a $100,000 house, you couldn't go to McDonald's and buy a meal for the increase. And I find it very hard for me to vote for this budget, that we, not only are we incurred another debt service, but we're not procuring the money to take care of that debt service. Thank you.
Mr. Buzzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was, as, as every budget is, it's a difficult budget, especially being at Tier One County. But as Vice Chair, Commissioner Langley mentioned the other, one of our last budget meetings, we've been kicking the can down the road for a number of years, and everything's becoming due, and these are issues that need to be addressed. And, and one of those issues was the, the number of roofs that we have here that are leaking. Now, I guess the alternative was, we could have offered, given our employees umbrellas or rain jackets in order to protect them from the rain, but no longer can these roofs be patched, and that, that's, that, that takes quite, quite a lot of money to do that. The other thing we had to address was the courthouse and the roof here, and internal repairs that have to be made to the courthouse that should have been made over the years. And the other thing we're facing is a decrease in funding, especially in our schools from the state, where per, per pupil funding keeps going down year after year in our public school system. And then the other thing is, is when we talk about, we hear all these increases in staff, they're in areas of law enforcement or security, they're in areas of EMS and paramedic service, which has increased, employment has increased by 34. But what we're doing now is bringing the emergency room to the driveway of, of our residents, and, which has been a very successful program, and there were, where people flatline, there's a large percentage, I think the percentage is around 30%, that are actually walking out of the hospital. So, that, that's, that's a, you know, how much money can we put on, or how much is a life worth? And then the, and the 911 center, where we have the, the additional personnel that can work closely with the family, and EMS on assisting to the communication, so we've increased the area of that, and, and some of our other programs where the staff was really cut to the bone when we had the recession in the county. And that takes money to, to bring the staff back to where it's adequate, whether it's in the financial area, the social service areas, water area, in order to make sure that we're meeting the residents' needs. And then the other area we had to address is technology in our school system. You know, we're not in the 18th century, we're not in the 19th century, we're not in the 20s, we're moving forward, and we have to make sure our schoolchildren have the best technology so they can make their way in the world. Now, we hear a lot of things, well, let's cut the budget here, you know, 5 million, 10 million, but nobody comes in and says, you know, let's do away with the Sheriff's Department, or let's do away with Human Resources, or let's do away with the Finance. Well, those are things that can't be done. And you just can't say, "Cut across the board and leave it up," but there's no concrete solutions. But again, as the other commissioners said, this is a very difficult budget. We had a lot of areas that we had to address, whether it's in the school systems, in the county office buildings, whether it's in EMS, whether it's in the Sheriff's Department, and I think we've addressed those issues. Not everybody's getting what they want. It's a very tight budget, the way I look at it, but I think this board's done a wonderful job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else have any comments before I go into mine? If not, I'm going to try to address some things that have, that have been mentioned, and try to avoid repeating anything that another commissioner has said. First thing I'd like to do is talk about the unassigned fund balance. We hear a lot of numbers from time to time, but I prepared this along with, with Brian and Anita to make sure my numbers work correctly. In 2014, our fund balance at the end of the year, according to the audit, was $19,120,000. We're projecting that the end of June 30th, 2018, which is a five-year period, that that number will be $13,855,000. That's a pull-down of the fund balance of $5,265,000. Now, what did the commissioners do with the money that they pulled down? This is not a complete list, but I'm going to hit the highlights, and this is in order of the size of the amount of money that we were pulling out of the fund balance. The first one was in 2016, that was for the radio system, that number was $1,806,000. In 2017, we addressed security at the school system and safety. That number was $558,000. In 2015, we addressed at Eastern Elementary, the multipurpose building that had been on the drawing books for years and years. That was $500,000. Now, these are all capital expenses. These are not for reoccurring utilities and salary. Then in 2016, I think the board was unanimous when we purchased the first bank building. Was it not? I'm sorry? Okay. But that amount was $477,000. In 2015, I understand the Washington High School fieldhouse had been on the drawing board. We approved that, and we appropriated $450,000. Then in 2016, we got a chance to purchase land adjacent to the community college. That number was $211,000. Here again, this is not for utilities, and it's not for salaries. Then in 201- Then in 2016, this board decided that we wanted to be in the EMS business and our startup cost for three vehicles was $208,000. Then in 2016, Phase Two of the Wrights Creek property, we decided to purchase the adjoining property for $200,000. And then in 2016, at the pleasure and the wishes of the board, we addressed security here at the courthouse. And I'm only using the 125 because that was the equipment. The additional money that we appropriated truly did go for salaries. The numbers that I've got here, which is for capital, is $4.5 million bucks. So we pulled down the fund balance 5.2. We didn't do anything stupid. We addressed problems that this board was elected to do. Now, I'm gonna address the loan, the $3 million loan. I'm not sure anybody else will take the credit, but I was one of the ones that suggested that we start with a loan unless Anita or Brian would like to admit to that. But I challenged them that we own the First Bank property, so we gotta fix it up, you know? Otherwise, it's not an asset that we're gonna be able to use. So the choice is sell it, fix it up, and use it. So I told them, I said, "We don't need to be doing a tax increase. We've already spent the $472,000 to pay for it out of our savings account." You know, most business people, if they're buying property, they're gonna...you know, they're gonna borrow the improvements or they're gonna borrow the purchase price. So I challenged them, okay? And after I challenged them to do that, that's when we got the word from Raleigh that we were having problems within the jail and within this building that we had to address. So when that number came in, which is a moving target, that's roughly $500,000. Now, you know, you can call that reoccurring expenses, but by golly, I don't think it's reoccurring. We're not going...we're not gonna fix the First Bank building up a one time, hopefully. Then we're throwing in there a generator for the Seaboard building. That's definitely a capital item. And then we're throwing in the loan, $105,000 to pave the parking lot at Tideland Building where the Board of Election and other offices are at. But the big one in here...one of the big ones in here, which is a roof replacement of $418,000 for the Seaboard building. You know, I guess you could debate it, but if you do a roof and you depreciate it for 20 years, that's capital. And here again, a business, if they had pulled down their fund balance or pulled down their savings account, would be saying to theirself, "If we're gonna do it today, you know, we can't up the price." I mean, we could up the tax rate to do that. And that was one of the options that we discussed in the process. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, you can debate maybe a $195,000 roof on the courthouse and X or $90,000 roof on the old jail as being reoccurring and something we should do. By doing this, we were able to go ahead and move some of these projects up without a tax increase on the citizens here in Beaufort County. With that, I'll stop. And do you have any more comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2017-2018 budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the 1617 budget as it stands.
1718.
1718.
Yeah, excuse me, 1718.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Brandt and second by Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed? Five-two. Now, do we still have to...
We do. Yes, we're two of us.
All right.
Page 307, please.
307?
Yes, sir. So as you're aware, the budget that you just adopted for 1718 does contain a $3 million financing package. We do anticipate that in order to avoid price increases and also deal with some seasonal constraints on the roofing projects, that we'll want to go ahead and begin some of that work before we finalize the borrowing. So what this action does is it's a declaration of official intent to reimburse, so this allows us to begin the projects, pay our vendors, and then reimburse ourselves from the proceeds once they're placed in that escrow account.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion to set up or do the declaration of official intent to reimburse. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Comments, questions? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six-one.
Thank you.
And according to my...that was the last item?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to...
You may also want to address whether we had it scheduled for a special meeting to adopt the budget on next Monday. They asked you to cancel that meeting.
Okay.
It's good.
The meeting's canceled. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand.